The final hearing is to consider a local law which would establish accessory dwelling units as a special permit use with related updates to Section 285, DS 5285, DS 10285, 36285, 38 and 28539 of the Code of the Town of Greenberg, TV 2309. My recollection is we are not, we're going to not close the hearing today, we're going to continue.
I believe that was the intention, I believe Commissioner Duquesne will recommend that.
Right, so we're not going to be voting on this today?
No.
So we'll listen to comments, and I thought what we should do is, we'll hear from, I'd like to move that we open up the hearing.
Second.
In favor of I?
Aye.
So members of the planning board had one view, the planning department had another, so we'll hear both versions and then hear from the community.
Supervisor, Commissioner Duquesne is going to make a presentation for us.
Right.
Very good, we are ready to go, thank you.
I don't know what I'm supposed to do.
Good evening Supervisor Finer and Town Council members. For the record Garrett Duquesne, Commissioner of the Department of Community Development and Conservation. This public hearing is related to a zoning text amendment which seeks to regulate and permit accessory dwelling units, or ADUs for short, in the one-family residence districts of the town by special permit approval of the planning board. Presently, ADUs are not permitted in the town of Greenberg. It appears that as of 2023, 21 of Westchester County's 45 cities, towns and villages permit ADUs in some form. An ADU is a small-sized dwelling unit, either a studio or one or two-bedroom unit, that is built on the same lot that contains a one-family residence. ADUs generally come in one of the three forms. In one of three forms. One form being as an attached to or within an existing one-family residence. Another form of ADU is when an accessory garage is converted to an ADU. And the third form is a separate ADU structure in addition to the one-family residence, whether having a garage or not. In the community where I reside, ADUs are permitted, and I know of two examples that I thought give a good visual sense of an ADU, so I will now share my screen. Okay, what you can see in the photo is that where I live, they do not pave the roads as nicely as we do here in the town of Greenberg, but actually that's not the way. The, on the left is an existing, a photo from 2012, and this was before an ADU that was somewhat close to where I live was built, that I knew of, and it was traditionally a standard home garage. And on the left, I think this was built sometime thereafter, maybe in the last three years, what they did was they converted their garage and raised it up a bit, and this is a garage conversion ADU example. This particular ADU, I believe, is a little bit less than 500 square feet. Okay, the next example that I was aware of that highlights a different type of ADU is one in which there's an existing residence, there's an existing garage, and then what was built was a freestanding ADU. This ADU example, which is in the center of the screen, is also less than 500,000 square feet. And I actually know the person that built this, and they indicated to me that the cost was significant, and in this example, minus architectural fees, and the construction exceeded slightly over $200,000, just for a frame of reference.
Wow.
But those are, those are two examples of ADUs, and again, the third that I identified before is when the ADU is within the house, I don't have a photo of that, but that could take many different forms. Okay. ADUs add to the spectrum of housing options in a community, are generally more affordable than traditional rental units due to their typical smaller size, and with appropriate zoning parameters, ADUs are planned to blend in with the existing community character. The best way to describe the proposed ADU local law that is the subject of this hearing tonight is to highlight its major criteria and special permit criteria, which would all have to be met in order to be approved. The town of Greenberg draft local law assigns a minimum of 10,000 square foot for lot size, and that's roughly one-quarter acre lot. When an ADU is proposed in a detached structure in addition to a separate garage, similar to that example I just gave, the minimum lot size requirement is 20,000 square feet, and that's roughly a half acre. The ADU cannot be less than 400 square feet in size, and cannot, I'm sorry, yeah, the ADU cannot be less than 400 square feet, but cannot exceed 800 square, 800 square footbacks. The ADU must meet all setback, impervious coverage, and other lot and bulk requirements under existing zone. The design of the ADU shall be architecturally compatible with the existing home. Short-term rentals are prohibited, the local law stipulates a minimum one-year lease requirement. One off-street parking space is required for each proposed bedroom, which is in addition to the existing two-space underlying requirement. Owner occupancy would be required. The local law is structured to permit the town board to place a cap on the number of ADU permits issued annually by resolution. Landscaping, street widths, and off-street parking considerations are discretionary areas of consideration for the planning board in approving or denying an ADU. The planning board discussed the proposed local law in connection with a town board referral. The planning board discussed the matter at work sessions on January 3rd, January 17th, February 7th, February 21st, and March 6th, all of 2024. The planning board held a public discussion on January 17th, 2024. On March 6th, 2024, the planning board issued a positive recommendation and related report with respect to the ADU local law. There were two recommendations that the planning board stressed in its vote, which were to remove the 10,000-square-foot lot size minimum, and instead have a 5,000-square-foot lot minimum, which the planning board felt would provide the fiscal benefits of an ADU to owners of smaller-sized lots who could potentially be of low to moderate income. The planning board also recommends eliminating the 20,000-square-foot lot size requirement associated with the ADU examples, which are in addition to an existing garage, noting that the existing zoning setbacks, such as impervious coverage maximums, are sufficient to ensure community character. The planning board identified new subdivisions as an opportunity with respect to ADUs, and recommends a process by which up to one-third of the homes approved in connection with subdivisions could contain ADUs. As a quick aside, I believe that this concept could be a good way to incorporate affordability into one-family residential development, which I know is a goal of the town board, and something that town staff is actively working on. The planning board advocated for clarifications on the owner-occupied requirement, noting that the owner could reside within the ADU as opposed to only within the primary residence. The planning board has additional comments, all of which were posted on the town website and which have been distributed to the town board. The planning board recommendations encompassed five meetings, highlighting the immense thought put into the referral, which is appreciated. I would like to also acknowledge the time and effort of the Accessible Viable Living Committee, who initiated this important discussion on ADUs through a similar and comprehensive process. Here to answer any questions the town board may have, and I look forward to hearing from those of us, thank you.
Some representative of the planning board wanted to speak and give an alternative, you know, view before we hear from the public, and I'm wondering if anybody would like to...
Town board?
Do we not have a, we have found a list?
I indicate, because they have, they made a request to make a presentation, yes. If we could have one person...
You mean to the planning board or just?
Yes.
So I believe Representative of the AVL would like to make the town board through some of his comments.
I'm sorry.
Good evening, my name is Dewan Stark. Garrett, are you pulling up the PowerPoint?
Yes, I will Dewan, I'll have that up just a second.
Great, thank you. I am joining you all from WestHAB. WestHAB, if, for those that are not familiar, we are the largest provider of continuum care in Westchester. We're also the largest nonprofit affordable housing developer. I'm very pleased to be joining the AVL committee, or Accessible Viable Living Committee. I was able to join about a year and a half ago with this committee, and those of us in the affordable housing industry and in the affordable housing advocacy area often have joined committees like these and task force to help identify different municipality needs for affordable housing. One of the many things that were explored in that process was the ability for Greenberg to look at their accessory dwelling units as a possible new law to be presented, and so we were part of that process. I am joined by Tim Foley, who will introduce himself in a moment. I'm just going to speak a little bit, and Garrett, I guess I'll say next slide. I'm just going to speak a little bit about some of the things that Garrett already touched on, and for those of you that are not familiar, these are kind of a picture graph of what Garrett already displayed earlier at the possibilities of the other municipalities in Westchester County that have looked at this option as potential affordable housing for homeowners. It's one of the many tools in the toolbox for homeowners to take advantage of creating affordable housing for themselves, it also creates affordable housing for the community. And what's displayed are the different options you can kind of see as you go through of both what Garrett showed, which were the detach options, the attached options, where there's a basement-level apartment, where there's an above-garage option, even an attic option, and then a contiguous build, building that's proposed as well. The accessory dwelling units and the point of creating and exploring this as an option for affordable housing really is to promote both another option, to help provide new single-family homes with the opportunity to create more revenue for themselves, both for seniors who may be looking to age in place, as well as families who may be burdened with the increase of everything, with the increase of the cost of groceries, with the additional cost burden that many families are experiencing. So this initiative is one of many that affordable housing advocates look towards, and what we've been exploring in the subcommittee. You can go to next slide. So just to kind of look at some of the benefits, to dig down a little bit deeper, there are creating both diverse affordable options as well as creating a compatibility with the neighborhood, so it is contextual in that there isn't a huge change. I will, you know, I am coming from an affordable housing developer, often we build multifamily dwellings, that's a change in, in the, you know, if you have a residential area, maybe a change in zoning, in this, in this case, there really isn't a huge impact on the change of the existing building, and that's what we're talking about when we say community compatibility. And with this ADU law, there's even the, to make sure that there wasn't an increase in parking. There's also, we explored to make sure that we were in compliance with local building codes as part of the AVL committee, and then also all of the other aspects of dwelling and the density inside of the units, so that they were not overcrowded, and that was also thought of as part of this ADU, and Tim will talk a little bit more about that. The other thing is that for those folks that are renting, this can help, and this is part of the work that WestHAB does, is really helping people with upward mobility, folks that are maybe potentially currently overhoused, maybe there are children that are able to move into their parents' home and have their own independent living space, maybe there are seniors who can benefit from that, you know, that extra income coming in, but the tenant that they're renting to is also able to make that step forward and potentially moved out of a crowded space into their own independent units. The other aspect is also the financing aspect for the homeowners who go through the ADU process, they're able to realize that additional income coming in. Also for the municipalities, it can also mean that's increased property values because of the addition of the ADU and increased real estate tax revenue. So there are, you know, lots of benefits that we see in the, in the affordable housing advocacy community to ADUs that can be on a macro level, but a micro level, but really make a macro impact on the overall adding of housing scarcity. I'm going to hand it over to Tim now, and he can talk a little bit more about what we've explored in AVL and about the law.
Thank you Dewan, and good evening. My name is Tim Foley, I'm the CEO of the Building and Realty Institute, which is a real estate trade association here within Westchester County. We're also one of the partner organizations for the Welcome Home Westchester Campaign, which is a multi-stakeholder campaign that's attempting to drive a new conversation about the housing shortage and encourage municipalities to do what they can to be part of the solution. And more to the point, for the past 18 months, I have been a resource and sounding board for the Accessible Viable Living Committee, and so I'm very glad to be with you tonight. One of the things that that committee did in its painstaking work was to really try to emphasize the balance. The balance on the one hand that those who are current homeowners who would most benefit from the ability to create an ADU, for those current or future renters who are looking for a more affordable option and would benefit from living within an ADU, that their needs were also balanced with what the natural concerns of the community would be in adopting a type of ordinance. And so what they have put together is, in my opinion, one of the more restrictive ADU ordinances, both within Westchester County and within the nation as a whole. All ADU ordinances are somewhat on a scale between restrictive and permissive. Permissive is of course very easy to use. Since you last looked at this ordinance, the states of Massachusetts and Rhode Island have both passed statewide ADU bills, which apply to every municipality within those states. How permissive are those? Well, those are all as-of-right, they do not have a special permit requirement, which is what's in the ordinance before you, they waive all parking requirements, they waive setback requirements. Essentially, if you have an application that fits within the specifications, you can just take it to the building department, and that is true for entire states. This ordinance is more on the restrictive side, I think with good reason. It requires that the ADU be owner-occupied, about half of the ordinances out there have that requirement, this one does. So it is someone actually within the community who is benefiting from an ADU, not a landlord who lives elsewhere. No short-term rentals are allowed within this ADU ordinance, and very importantly, when what makes it more restrictive, no deviations from town codes. Not more than one ADU per buildable lot, there is very specific square footage that has been deliberately drafted to keep the size of the ADUs within the character of an ADU, where it will be typically invisible from the street, you won't know that it is there for the most part, within the neighborhood. And one off-street parking spot per bedroom, which again is on the more restrictive side. More to the point there, as the planning board had noted, there are two areas in which perhaps it is overly restrictive and may actually be tipping the balance away from those who would most benefit from it. The first of which is that requirement that it only take place within the 10,000-square-feet lots, as opposed to a 5,000-square-foot lot, as well as a 20,000-square-feet lot for detached. As the planning board mentioned in their letter, because it has to adhere to all of the town codes, already, a lot of the issues that would come from an oversized ADU on a too-small lot have already been taken into account. It has to adhere to Florida area, Florida area ratio, it has to adhere to the imperious service coverage, the size of the ADU is specified within the ordinance, so if the concern was that on a 5,000 lot, the ADU would dwarf it, it's not practical or possible for it to do so, even without the 10,000 restriction. One of the other things that the planning board mentioned specifically was they had suggested a more specific definition of community character, since community character is one of the things that can be reviewed as part of the special use permit. They actually tied it to a number of very specific factors within a particular community. And in general, that's a much better way of doing it, just leaving it as the current draft is with a broad definition of community character. To be honest, at various times throughout our history, that phrase has a tarnished reputation because it is so subjective, and it has been misused in any number of circumstances. Being more specific about what you mean within the text of the law is always a better way to go. So the bottom line is that even were you to adopt the changes that were recommended by the planning board, this would still be far more on the restrictive side than on the permissive side. Next slide. Oh, actually, yes, next slide, thank you. What are the concerns of the ADU? Well, we talked about community character, we talked about density, again, that has been taken into account within the text of the ordinance before you, we have talked about parking, that is explicitly taken care of within the text of the, of the ordinance before you, stress on the existing infrastructure, again, because it is so limited, has to go through special permit, that is something that they will have to look at. One of the things we haven't talked about is the affordability to build, and that is something that is a concern, that is certainly not addressed by the ordinance, it's not necessarily the place for the ordinance to address that. But one of the big dampeners on the creation of accessory dwelling units in Westchester, even where they are currently permitted, is it takes some money to do that. To typical ranges more between 100 and 150,000, it's not the $200,000 very fancy cottage that Garrett showed, that looks like Magnum P.I. could probably live in that. By the way, Magnum P.I. lived in an ADU, Fonzie from Happy Days lived in an ADU, we're used to seeing these on TV. However, there are a number of organizations that are using state dollars through the plus-one ADU program here in Westchester, it's specifically Habitat for Humanity, Westchester and New York City, that is targeted for homeowners who have incomes at or below 100% of the area median income, who would build owner-occupied, single-family homes and communities zoned for ADUs, that would provide up to $125,000 in soft and hard costs per home to create or legalize accessory apartments in specified service areas. Without this ordinance, that program can't exist here, so you would not be able to do that outreach, it would not apply because ADUs are not permissible. If ADUs were permissible through the passage of this ordinance, that is a real benefit that some particularly middle and lower-income homeowners might well avail themselves of, just because there is a natural cost to building an ADU. The AVL committee and the planning board and the current ordinance were concerned about the burden on planning board resources, that's why the ability to set a cap is built directly into the law. And then there are other alternatives to reach the goal of affordable housing, one of the things that ADUs opens up the possibility for is, again, there's been a challenge in terms of new developments in getting affordability in there, it's not so much a challenge with rentals, you have an ordinance, it works fairly well, but in terms of affordable home ownership options, particularly with, if we're talking new developments, there are very limited ways of increasing affordability, and this might create one of those. Next slide. So will ADUs have specified parking requirements? Yes, it is written into the law. However, ADUs will, because they are required to have off-street parking, will not generate any additional street parking in the ordinance that's in front of you. What avenues, opportunities do neighboring property owners have to comment on a proposed ADU? Well, it's going through the special permit approval process, which requires public hearing, and it requires notification to surrounding neighborhoods, so that has also been taken into account. Will ADUs transform my neighborhood? No, as you've seen both from the images that Garrett produced and the ones that were in Dewan's slides, it's typically no different visually from a street level or from a neighbor from any other type of renovation that you would see within a single-family home, especially because all ADUs must adhere to, as I say this again, to the current zoning regulations, they are not offered any type of special break on those. What impact do property taxes will ADU have? Well, all properties with ADUs will be taxed as a single-family home, they will not suddenly become commercial properties or anything else like that, it will be about the same. Is my neighborhood going to be overrun by ADUs? Well, no, the proposed law specifically limits applications to just 25 per year, the only exception there is new developments, your neighborhood will not be overrun by that because there is no neighborhood there, the development hasn't been built yet, and that's why that is the only exception, but for where a neighborhood is already existing, you are protected by that cap. And finally, will my property be restricted from having an ADU? Well, under the town board's size restrictions from the modified version of what the AVL had originally brought forward, the answer in some cases will be yes. For anyone with a lot with fewer than 10,000 square feet, applicants will need to request a variance with the zoning board in addition to all the other steps required for an application. So how confident are we that we will stay under that 25 cap? Well, projections can be hard, it's much easier to look back at what other places have done. So next slide. Oh, I'm sorry, this is just to mention what I had said previously, that when you're talking about new development, there's certainly other opportunities that the AVL wanted to underline. Again, you're talking about the creation, for the most part, divisions, new clusters, new developments, so on and so forth, and there is the possibility in things like the Elmwood Project to actually add ADUs as a measure of affordability in a way that you wouldn't necessarily. But the slide after that was the one that I was leading up to, when you look at the statistics about who has had ADUs, you can have a fair amount of confidence. Here in Westchester, the longest-living ADU ordinance is in the town of Bedford, it was created in the 1980s, it took 10 years for them to even have 60 requests. We've seen across the country, in some, we have about 40 years of experience with ADUs in different municipalities. In every single case, they are a fraction of a percent of the number of housing units over any lengthy period of time. The ones with the highest percentage are ones that are far more on the permissive side than anything that is contained within the town ordinance tonight. You'll see the chart ahead of you, most of the ones that have seen heavy ADU development, first of all, are still less than 1%, but allow it for as-of-right, do not necessarily have minimum lot sizes, this one does, does not, some of them do, some of them don't have owner-occupancy requirements, this one does, many of them don't have parking requirements, this one does, many of them allow short-term rentals, this one does not. Even in those cases, most of them are fewer than half of 1%. So let's say this is successful, more so than it's been in any other municipality within the country in a very short period of time, and you have 0.5% growth in your housing units just from ADUs over five years, that would still only be 83 units. That is already well below the cap that is set within the ordinance of 25 special unit permits per year, and it's going through a much more restrictive environment to get there. The last point that I just want to make is there is a natural, part of the reason why you see such low levels even where ADUs are more permissive, is because the market drives a lot of the conversation. This is not something that most homeowners will want to use, most homeowners will not want to have someone living within an apartment on their property, and they'll just keep going about their business, and their single-family homes will remain single-family homes. This is not a policy for everybody, but this is a policy that can make an important difference for a very, very small number of people, those who are willing to invest to build an ADU somewhere within their property, those who would benefit from having the additional rental income because they're on a fixed income, or they're seniors or what have you, those who would benefit from having an ADU as their living place, someone who's starting up, young married couple, millennial, someone who sometimes has special needs, and an ADU may be a better living experience for them where there's someone close by, including but not limited to a family member, than living in any type of setting. So it is important housing policy for those folks, many of whom are currently living in the town of Greenberg. Thank you.
I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for your presentation, and thank you Garrett for your presentation. I reached out to all the villages in Greenberg, because five of the six villages have a, have the legislation and they've had it in place for a while, and I just thought I'd spend just a minute or two mentioning, the village of Hastings, they indicated, they adopted their accessory unit code in 2003, it was revised in 2019, they have 22 units, and like Irvington, participate in the NY, New York State ADU grant program, they've had inquiries, but no, no one's taken advantage. Irvington has had an ADU law on the books since 2016. Irvington has had an ADU law on the books since 2016, and they have a total of two approved ADUs since 2016. They're also participating in the grant program along with Habitat for Humanity. They've had inquiries, but none of the residents have taken advantage of the grants. The village of Dobbs Ferry has had one ADU on record since adopting the ADU law almost two years ago. And the village of Hardsley has had three inquiries and one application, and the ADU was approved, and the CVO will be issued soon, according to the mayor. One of the reasons why so few people participate in this is the cost of construction is expensive, and also people are concerned that if they build an ADU, their property taxes will increase because assessments will increase. So those are the ones, Tarrytown adopted the law a year and a half ago, and they've had four ADUs created and permitted in Tarrytown. And, you know, they may, you know, review it again. So that's basically the experiences of, you know, of the villages within the town of Greenberg, and our law would not, would only apply to unincorporated Greenberg if we adopted. So now we're ready to hear from the public.
Actually, I have one question. So does it actually change the assessment?
It does change the assessment.
Okay. We have Murray Bowden. Are you speaking on the...
No.
Okay. Elizabeth Brady?
Each speaker has five minutes. It's come to my attention that this clock is, you know, being blocked a bit. There is another clock on the other side of the room. If anyone has any issues with knowing how much time is left, please ask.
You can't move the clock.
No, it can't move.
No, it can't move it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. When I first read about ADUs and heard about them, I was in favor of them. I thought it sounded like a good idea. It was sort of pitched as something where an elderly parent could live and be close to their children, and it seemed fine to me. I've since changed my opinion, and I no longer support this act, and I do not believe that these units should be involved, should be around in single-family home areas. I do live in an area of single-family homes. My main reason for opposing them is the parking situation, which I know was mentioned here as being taken care of, but I would like to explain the situation in the neighborhood that I live in. There are two houses on the street near mine that have more than one generation living in the house. The people living in the house are not elderly parents, but people like myself and younger who have multiple cars. There are not enough, there is not enough space in the driveways of these houses for cars, so the family members park in the streets, and the streets are narrow in my neighborhood. Because of that, there are, it creates a dangerous situation for cars trying to turn onto the street where the cars are parked. The street becomes very narrow as cars jockey to get around the parked cars, and it's made worse by the fact that there are two families on the same street with multiple generations living in the same house. It seems that everybody in the house except for the children has a car. They're all parked on the street because the driveways can't hold them all. So for safety concerns, I think the idea of the accessory dwelling unit, it can't be limited just to people who don't have cars, obviously, and I think it creates a danger to other people who live in the neighborhood. And I know the, one of the provisions in the law said that off-street parking needs to be provided for these units, but just looking at the two houses on the street next to me where you have the multiple generations living, I don't see where another parking lot would be feasible. The parking spaces that exist are full up with cars. So for parking reasons, primarily, I would oppose a permit allowing these dwellings to be built where there are single-family homes in Greenberg.
And you live in...
I live in the unincorporated town of Greenberg, yes.
Can you just state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Elizabeth Brady.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
May we have Al Florio?
And when everyone approaches, please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Al Florio. My wife and I live at Two Lenrock Drive. We've been residents of the town of Greenberg since 1979. We love the town of Greenberg. I'm going to take you on a little journey that we've been through. In 1973, we bought our first house. It was a small house in the Bronx on Hayde Avenue. I don't know if you're familiar with Hayde Avenue, but it's just south of Pellon Parkway. And it was our first house, and a couple of months later, the people next door moved in. They sold the house, a new couple, young couple moved in. And what they first did was they renovated the basement to a, one, it was a studio apartment they made. And the people that moved in were lovely. In fact, the guy and his son, he was a mensa. He was a genius. So it was always interesting talking to him. When we bought our house on Hayde Avenue in 1973, the street was lined with trees. It was a gorgeous neighborhood. We had a one-car garage in front of the house. We didn't even use the garage. We used to park right on the street because there was plenty of parking. When that, when that couple moved in next door, they brought with them two cars. So now, even though I parked in front, I didn't mind. The street was still a lot of parking spots. And by the time we left that house in 1979, there were about four, I think four, what do they call it, ADUs? There were four houses that had tenants in the basement. Nothing was added onto the house. Everything was done in the basement. And, but what it did was, it increased the number of cars on the street. And most people had one car, and at that time, everybody was starting, the women were starting to work and get into business, and so almost every family started having two cars. So the street started to get a little congested. We moved up here in '79. In about 1995, we took a ride down the Bronx and to see some of our friends in the old neighborhood. When we got down there, we couldn't find a place to park. We had to circle the block because the parking was unbearable. We also noticed that, I know, garbage pails on sidewalks, there were extra garbage pails. Usually, everybody put their garbage in the yard, garbage pails in the yard, but things started to change, and you saw the change. And when we left there in '79, there was about four families with, you know, tenants, but now there's probably, you know, several more. And the neighborhood changed. We couldn't find a parking spot. About three years ago, we took a ride down there. That lovely street we saw or we had with the trees along the side, maybe two or three trees were left. Cars all over the street, double parked. It was a one-way street to begin with, right off to Pellon Parkway. The trees were, the trees were gone, garbage pails on the sidewalk, and the worst part of it was cars were parking in the front yard. There's no place to park. This was a gorgeous neighborhood, just like the gorgeous neighborhood I live in today. If you approve this and allow people to take their homes and develop them into two-family homes, you're going to create a tremendous problem, like the lady before me said, just with parking, with sanitation, with all kinds of issues. You've developed a gorgeous town in the town of Greenberg. If it's low-income housing you want, build low-income housing. Build additional housing, but don't wreck what you've set up here. We live in a beautiful, I call it a bedroom community. I love it. You start adding all these cars, and the woman is right, they're starting to see more cars on the street where, in the past, everybody had to park in their driveway. So I tell you today, as I stand there, my experience over the last 50 years, this is not what you'll want in the town of Greenberg. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Doreen Livson, L-I-V-S-O-N. The Council of Greenberg Civic Associations, the CGCA, learned that the proposed legislation to permit accessory dwelling units, ADU, was scheduled for a public hearing tonight when Commissioner Garrett Duquesne sent us an email and attachment to civic leaders on Friday, September 20th. Mr. Duquesne agreed to attend the CGCA's meeting on Monday, September 23rd, and he answered many questions. He also sent us more information yesterday. The CGCA appreciates his efforts. Supervisor Finer did post a message about tonight's public hearing on the town's website on Monday, September 23rd, two days ago. But posting on the Greenberg website and an email blast is not sufficient notification. The majority of residents in unincorporated Greenberg do not know about tonight's meeting, nor are they aware of what is being proposed. The town board has to be more resident-sensitive. The magnitude and impact of this proposed legislative change is overwhelming. More publicity is necessary to promote, inform, to properly inform all Greenberg residents. The CGCA recommends that the town board schedule several well-advertised meetings to inform and discuss this issue with the public before holding another public hearing. Commissioners of various town departments, such as the Accessor, Building, CD&amp;C, and DPW, as well as a Realtor, an Architect, an Attorney, and a Banker, should attend these meetings to answer questions. There is a proposal for huge amounts of money being expended by homeowners. Will it be recovered? How do renters and homeowners find each other? Who vets the renters? How will the town's disagreement with the planning board and Westchester County over the wording of the law be resolved? There is the potential of 37 IDUs to be constructed on the Elmwood Country Club. How will the school districts be impacted? A note on that, that's my neighborhood. That's Mr. Florio's neighborhood. At the CGCA meeting, it was suggested that the proposed legislation should even be put into a referendum. Has the town board considered that? What is the rush? Do not blindside the community. Please educate the public before scheduling any more hearings. Thank you. Madeline K. O'Shea, CGCA Chair.
We could, you know, have some program, information programs before, you know, in the period between now and when a second hearing is held, so we could provide people with more information and have questions answered. You know, I think that's, you know, that's a good idea, you know, educating, and we could also invite people who possibly live near ADUs in some of the villages or in some of the communities to speak and talk about, you know, their experiences. We could invite village officials or officials in other communities that have ADUs to talk about their experiences, because I think that if we, you know, if, I think your idea of reaching out to the community and educating and informing, I think is a good, is a really good suggestion.
Notification is of utmost importance.
Right.
Simple pulse card to every single resident, no matter what it costs, should go out.
No, we would, we will do maximum. I like the idea, you know, what you're saying.
Can I just make a comment? So I agree with you, more information and outreach, but I think it's also worth noting that the villages have had so few applicants that that is something to consider in this process. I know it sounds like it's like a, going to be a free-for-all, but maybe not at all. So...
Mr. Kamiu?
Thank you, council members. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. My name is Chris Kamiu. I'm the campaign organizer from Welcome Home Westchester. We are pro-housing campaign. We work with all municipalities in Westchester to find solutions to this housing shortage, and we want to find good housing policy solutions. So I'll be speaking on...
You can pick this up, it's easier for you.
Oh, as opposed to bending over? Thank you. I'll be speaking of ADUs and why we're pro-ADUs. ADUs, accessory dwelling units, are small self-contained apartments that are added onto the same property as an existing single-family home, duplex, and other residential building. I want to put the emphasis on small and self-contained. Accessory dwelling units provide more affordable housing options while supplementing incomes to middle-class and senior homeowners, providing a boost to local contractors and employment, and in nearly all cases, increasing home values for a sustained boost to the economy. ADUs can be garage conversions, backyard cottages, converted attics, or basement apartments, any space on an existing lot that can be repurposed into a fully separate living place. ADUs are typically unnoticedable, and when I say unnoticedable, as in one wouldn't typically know an ADU exists there. No, do they noticeably transform the neighborhood's character or a single-family zone. ADUs are a small piece of the overall housing puzzle, but may be attractive options for empty nesters or middle-class homeowners who have more available than they need, and senior millennials and others who may be looking for smaller, more affordable options without concern for overwhelming municipalities or school districts. I am among that millennial class. ADUs are an economical housing option. ADUs can generate rental income to help homeowners cover mortgage payments or simply make ends meet. The income provided by an ADU tenant can be especially important for older people on fixed incomes. Many ADUs are created for family members to reside in for free or at discounted rate. In fact, when loved ones are in need of care or can't live alone, an ADU can be a viable alternative to a costly-assisted living facility. ADUs are good for the environment. ADUs require fewer resources to build and maintain the fully-sized homes. ADUs use significantly less energy for heating and cooling. Of all the ADUs types, internal ones tend to have the lowest building and operating cost. ADUs are able to house people of all ages. ADUs don't discriminate. ADUs offer young people entry-level housing choice. ADUs enable families to expand beyond their primary homes, no matter the ages of those family members. The people who benefit most are empty nesters, families with young children, individuals in need of care, and those who are looking for housing options where there are none. And this information is pulled from the American Association of Retired Persons, AKA AARP. In 2021, the AARP Home and Community Preferences Survey surveyed adults 18 or older who would consider creating an ADU, and these are what they said they would do with ADUs. 86% said they provide a home for a loved one in need of care. Another 86% said they provide housing for friends or relatives. 82%, 82% said that they would have a space for guests. 74% said they... said that they would create a place for a caregiver to stay. 69% said they would increase the value of their home. 67% said feel safer by having someone live nearby. And 63% of those surveyed said they would earn extra income from renting to a tenant. In conclusion, ADUs provide alternatives for folks who are in low income, people who are empty nesters, people who just need the housing options or need someone to have a housing option with them. We hope that you consider ADUs be part of the Greenberg community, as they are a part of so many other Westchester communities, and they don't see many of those negatives that folks tend to fear. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, can we have Mr. Councilman Ken Jones? On that? My apologies. May I have Mr. Simon? Did you only want to speak on sidewalks?
Yes.
I stand corrected. You have to yield to Mr. Hal Sammis. I apologize.
Paul Simon again. I fully understand the position of, I think, the gentleman who said he lived in the Bronx. He bought his first house in 1979. Well, I lived in the Bronx, not far from him, and I bought my house in 1979, and was on the dead-end street in the last surviving farm in New York City. It was on that street. So it was a lovely, quiet street. Since then, there were many houses built there, and the parking, I go there, and the parking is abominable. But you cannot compare what happened in the Bronx to what's, to this proposal. We took all of those things into consideration, as we said before. This is the most restrictive ADU law, and probably in the whole county of Westchester. We see the history of the other towns because they take it into effect, parking. They take it into effect how many you can build. And so the proposed law, you just cannot equate that to what happened in the Bronx. They're two different animals. The other thing that was brought up is that the financing, yes, that the law, this law does not take into financing. And the idea that some of these ADUs might be $100, $200,000 for a young couple, okay, the cost of a house in Westchester County is approaching $700,000, $670, whatever that cost is. A young couple cannot, with the college loans, even if you go into college, with college loans and everything else, you cannot come up with a down payment to buy a house in Westchester. But, and so they can't afford that mortgage. But they can afford a mortgage for $100,000 or $200,000 to have that built in their parents' home so they or their parents could live in that ADU, and eventually, they might swap places with their parents. So this will not be the case in every situation, but there is a viable alternative to come up with that money to build the ADU. And let's make it clear that there are people, that middle section, you know, we have low-income housing, but for the people who earn, say, $50,000 to $100,000 or $125,000, they are above any other, they don't qualify for anything, but they can't afford to buy housing in this town. So this is a vehicle for them to do that. And I think we should not panic the public by comparing what this law is to the situation in the Bronx. That's not an accurate or fair comparison. This is a very restrictive law, and compared to other towns in Westchester that has a far more, have a less restrictive policy, they're not flooded with these ADUs. So I think we need to look at the history. We need to look at the statistics, and rather not making just an emotional response, just look at the data. This is a very restrictive law, and it does not create a situation that it would have a negative impact on neighborhoods. Thank you.
Mr. Hal Sammis?
I have to wonder, what requires these units to be affordable? I mean, that seems to be the incentive to allow this, but is there anything in any of these laws that limit the rent? If you have an 800-foot unit, that rent can be $5,000 if it's on a property which is magnificent. So if the ultimate goal here is to create affordable housing, then shouldn't our local law have some restrictions on rent, much as subsidized housing does? Otherwise, it'll be market rate. Now, one unit must be owner-occupied, but what about the second unit? Can it be leased to an entity? I mean, these are questions which I'm hoping I'll get an answer to at the end. Can the entity in turn sublet under his lease? There still will be an owner in one of the units, but in essence, you're creating the possibility of rumors and borders, or a bed and bath. What prevents that from happening? Can an ADU ultimately be converted to a condominium once you partition the property, either by voluntarily leaving the program or thrown out for violations? And as for violations, this all depends upon a building inspector to be the police. Now, we pass laws with the idea that there will be someone on the spot to enforce them. How's it going with the leaf blower law? Are the police enforcing it? Is the building inspector enforcing it? So all of this is predicated on the assumption that there will be someone in charge of it and seeing that all the bylaws are followed. I'm curious as to why the unit can't be less than 400 feet. There are units all over this area, and especially in New York City, of less than 400 feet. Park cars. Well, Garrett's pictures showed you driveways chock-full of cars. Is that the look that we want to have in our community? So in essence, I'm here to get answers. Garrett is watching, or the town attorney is there. Someone give me the answers. So basically, everyone is out to lunch. That's typical.
After everybody speaks, Garrett will answer questions or comment.
Can we have Nicholas? Thank you. No, or...
Can you spell it, please, for the record?
C-A-B-L-U-Z-Z-I. Nicholas. I live at 34 Edgewood Road. I've lived in there since 1976. I don't have a Bronx story for you, but I've been there a long while. It's a wonderful neighborhood. Trees, whatever, are left constantly, which is part of my discussion tonight. I'm only here tonight because I never knew there was going to be, I assumed this thing was, there was, I checked, and we've got like 15 letters on record, and 13 of them are against them. And then I came here, and like for a half an hour, you got a non-for-profit developer telling me all the wonderful things about it. All I know is that I lived on Edgewood Road. Edgewood Road, beginning, it's from edge to edge, or curb to curb, whatever you want to call it, it's 24 feet wide. That road, right now, in the summertime, is the main thoroughfare. To get, you want to cut through the high school, get through there. And that road is a chicane. It's one of the letters, there's 13 letters here and against it, and one of them indicates very clearly what, you drive down that street in the summer, you can't get down there because it's narrow. It should be really a one-way road or parking on one side, whatever. The bottom line, it barely exists as it is in the summer. Luckily, in the winter, the town is smart enough to take the cars off the street, because we never get, you can't get vehicles through that street. So like I said, I'm talking tonight because I have a letter, and I'm not going to probably read it. I don't have the time, although they got, the developers here got almost a half hour at least, basically promoting this whole thing, which to me, it's very clear, it's very simple, you know. We, I live in, it's happened on 9,000 square feet, so you're bringing that down to 5,000. Right now, this street can't survive with another, everybody has at least two or three cars, mostly three, if you did an average, go down that block. This is a neighborhood that I bought the house at $50,000. The houses in this block are going for $800,000. So talking about saving money, the way to save money for people who need money is to lower the taxes. That was someone's idea. I mean, what, you know, yeah, if you can't afford to live there, lower the taxes, and we could afford to live there. I won't have to move. Luckily, I'm able to, I'm able to live there. But people moving into there, spending $800,000, so sure, they got to make money. And to me, it's very clear, the main thing is the safety. Right now, there's an issue on that particular road. Not all of them are like that, because we are a thoroughfare, Edgewood Road, that area. You drive down, I guarantee you drive down, you're not going to go flying down that street at all. Fire trucks that sometimes have issues because the cars, the space is not involved. Telling me that not to worry about it, that it's only a few going to happen in town, doesn't help me a lot, because we have ordinances right now for tree removal, for noise, and the only way I get after this stuff is I have to complain. And I don't complain, but my point is, this is another thing. I don't need to be going after a neighbor who gets one of these things going, parking all over the street. You know, I cannot park outside of, I have to park in the driveway, and maybe another neighbor could park outside. So this whole, to me, it's like a no-brainer. Why you would ever want to do this in this area is beyond me. You've got lots of options. White Plains is building all these houses. Go there. Just drive down Edgewood Road in the summer, and you tell me if you're going to put a double amount of cars in there, if that's going to work. Thank you.
Can we have Leslie Davis?
So I guess we're going to have Bronx Night at the Town Hall. I'm from the Bronx also. I know the area, Pelham, that he's talking about. But one of the things I wanted to point out is that we don't currently have an ADU law. And my neighborhood right now is the commuter's parking lot, so we do have issues with parking with an ADU law, without an ADU law. And to the point of the gentleman who spoke earlier, when I first moved up here, I used to have to commute from Manhattan, come up West Side Highway. Soon as I hit the sprain, it was like, because there were no cars. And even going the opposite way in the morning, not as much traffic many years ago, but that's no longer the case. Tarrytown Road, no longer the case. Many people have more than one car, more than two cars, more than three cars for their home. That's without the ADU law. So I don't think that the, and what I'm saying is, I don't believe that the ADU law is the cause of the situation that we currently have. I believe that that's a separate situation, so even if we pass the ADU law or we don't pass the ADU law, you're still going to have trouble with parking. Now, going back to the ADU law and the parking situation, in the town of Greenberg, I don't, I'm not pointing out any particular homes, but we already have people who have people who live in the basement, who have people who are multifamily or multi-generational living there. When we talk about legalizing these apartments, that's one of the ways to legalize it. Some of the situations, when you're talking about going down a block and there's a lot of cars, it's because you already have multi-generational. But they're right now living in illegal apartments that don't have codes, that are very dangerous, and I think people would be able to take advantage of having those apartments legalized. I'm in favor of ADUs. I'm in favor of it specifically when I do think about aging in place. I think that's one of the things, and again, for all of this, there is a personal aspect, and I see in my neighborhood, people who have actually lived here for many years have played major roles in developing the town of Greenberg, and they're older now, and their children, and I've heard this many times, their children are going to Jersey. They're not staying here. So it's like a loss of a brain trust. And it's not that they're not staying here because they're, you know, they're sloth, or they're, they might have just graduated nursing school. They might have just graduated school. They just don't have the income in the beginning to purchase a home. Not to mention that there is sometimes a benefit to having a family member. We know through the Medicare law that they've passed a law where family members are now being paid to take care of their own family, not just because people want to make money, but because there's a comfortability to having someone you know there. I understand the fear, and that's exactly what it is, that if we do this, there's going to be a run on people trying to build, you know, these ADUs. And I just don't think from the statistics that that's actually going to be the case. The one thing that I do want to ask, as I was never clear, is why it changed from the $5,000 to $10,000, specifically because I live in a 7-5 area, and I'm not sure, you know, what the reasoning behind that. I guess I would just need some understanding on what that is. But I don't think that the statistics bear out that there's going to be a run on applications for people to do this. I do think that once it does become, or if and when it does become legal, there'll be no excuse for people to have apartments in their homes that haven't been inspected. Not to mention, we do have a roommate, I think it's roommate border law that's already on the books. So when you talk about a person can be a roommate or a border, they're still going to have a car. That's already on the books. So I'm not sure that the ADU law would be the cause of an overrun of, oh, yeah, overrun of people not parking or not having parking spaces. I don't think that that's the cause of it. I think there's a lot of other issues that go into that. And in terms of people buying more than one car in their home, that's not what this is about. Again, the ADU law does address the amount of parking spaces that they can have. So that's going to be something that's inspected. So if there was any question out of this, it would be just maybe an explanation on the change from $5,000 to $10,000.
Manny Arises?
Hi, how are you? My name is Manny Arises. I was trying to avoid coming up here and saying anything, but the amount, what I wanted to say, why bother? Why bother? I mean, the restrictions that you're putting on to this law is definitely just to kill it or to diminish the opportunity of people who really need to have these apartments building their properties not to be able to. 20,000 square-feet lots, and there are parts of town that could benefit from this. How many people have 20,000-square-foot lots? For that matter, 10,000 square feet. So you're creating a law to fix a problem that is existent in most neighborhoods, including the villages, that is restrictive housing codes that prevents people from having multiple dwellings built in their community. So this is a fix, and I compliment you on that, but the law that you're passing is not to benefit the majority of the people that can use these apartments. You're not. You're not. that can use these apartments. You're not, you're not. The, the, the things about parking, it's just another, not in my backyard, kind of an approach. And, you know, we have a lot of that. And a lot of people who might not want to benefit from this because they, they don't, don't need it, can look for excuses not to have these, this law passed. But it really comes down to the fact that it's not the number of houses that, that will benefit from this, it's the fact that you're passing a law that will not benefit the people who can really use it. Okay? And I, I, I can't tell you in so many different ways, the other parts of, of this, that it bothers me, because like mentioned before, other laws that the town board has looked at, and has found fixes that are inenforceable, and really benefit no one, no one in particular, and harms other people from doing their businesses, or, or having a, a better, a better life in Greenberg, are numerable, okay? And sometimes we have to take a chance to do the right thing that might not make us look good, and move through it, okay? That's one of the many things that I, concerns me about the way that you're proposing this law, the, and the number of restrictions, and this is having a special permits that need to be filed, it just adds another level of concern, a lot of, another cost. Yes, if you really want to create housing, not affordable, housing. Because housing, by creating housing, you create affordable housing, because people move in the direction of, of the housing that they want and need, when, as you create more housing. Please, please, go ahead and create the housing. In fact, you, maybe you should look on where you can put multiple dwellings, you know, because housing is needed, and the years of restriction in creating single-family homes, restrictions all over, all over Westchester have, have really dampened the ability of people to live in this community. And what can I say? I, I do, I live in a single-family home, and I don't know if I would do this. And I know in my neighborhood of Juniper Hill, we do have a, a parking problem in many of the streets, but it has nothing to do with this, this law. Or, I gotta tell you, to reiterate what the, the young lady said before, we already have people living in ADUs here. Okay, we already have. And I can, I, I can point them out in various communities, and if this will make them legal and provide for a safer living environment, you should change the restrictions. Change the restrictions so it can benefit the community, the communities in, in unincorporated Greenberg that can benefit from this. This is a law that wants to be passed, so it can be used, and I don't think that's the benefit to anyone. Thank you.
Can we have Ayesha Sparks?
Thank you. My name is Ayesha Sparks. I want to ditto the sentiments of Walter, as well as Leslie, and just want to share that what I'm hearing tonight, I'm hearing, and I, I am aware that there is a problem of parking in the town, but I'm also, in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, people, our neighbors, the people in need, I see people, neighbors on one hand, and I'm hearing cars and parking on the other hand. And then I'm also thinking about the statistics that were presented here about, you know, the aggressiveness of the law, and the number of people in the different towns. In my opinion, I want to say, if this law passes, and we have one or two ADUs built, that is, that is a success. That means that our neighbors are now able to pay their mortgage, or elderly have a plan to stay in Greenberg for the future, uh, young adults have a place to go, I mean, people that grew up in Greenberg, that once they age out, they can no longer afford to live here. Let's start thinking about the people. As Leslie mentioned, this law is not going to exacerbate the problem, it, it already exists. But let's not use those issues as a reason to not support our neighbors, the people, not the cars, the people. I just want to add that I am in one hundred full support of the law as written by the AVL, and then also subsequently recommended by the planning board, removing any large restriction on square footage of the land. Again, we also want to reach the people that most in need. And I also want to add that by special permit, if it is a proposed ADU being built in a neighborhood where the parking is really, really bad, then it is up to the planning board to decide whether it should be recommended or not. So, again, it, it's not going to be overrun of ADUs that are going to come into the town. I love Greenberg, I've been in the town for over fifteen years, my kids go to Woodlands, but we care about people more, our neighbors more, than the issues that already are here. The ADU is not going to make it worse. We have to think about innovative other ways to solve the problems in the town, and we have to do it together as a people, caring about our people and our neighbors. With that, I thank you, and I hope that the law passes. Good evening.
Anybody else?
That ends the list.
I had a question for Garrett. The question I have is, um...
I believe you did ask to speak prior to us, yeah.
Is, is this starting second round?
Did you, I don't believe he spoke.
He didn't speak on this, he spoke on the sidewalk.
Yeah. Yeah, so you could start the five-minute clock, please, when you begin.
Yeah, of course. My name is Still Murray Bowden. You missed something, and I want to call your attention to it right now. We're all here because we see each other face-to-face. And it's well-known, and New York City says, come to the office, because that's where the work gets done. So my question is, Garrett's sitting right there. Why did he do his presentation on the screen? That was instigated during the pandemic to make it easier for people who weren't there, like Garrett's right here. He should have been sitting right over there, making his presentation from here, and if you had to rearrange the tables, that was your responsibility. And Paul, it's your responsibility, and it's board's responsibility, that the commissioners execute their responsibilities in a responsible way. You're here to hire and fire. I questioned, and he's going to come up now and explain, why he was on Zoom instead of sitting over there.
I just had a question for you. So, um, the question I had is, there's some people here who are concerned about parking. Um, I'm just asking him a question.
Let him get there first.
Well, I thought maybe he should have got all the questions.
So the question, the question I have is if somebody, um, let's say somebody wants to do an ADU, and the street has tons of parking, you know, issues, planning board would have the discretion to say no to that proposed ADU?
I believe so, yes.
And would we also, I mean, I'm wondering if it would make sense to, um, um, ask, you know, as part of legislation to have, say, the, the traffic safety officer, or the police give an opinion, just like, you know, we do on other things before, in terms of whether the road has parking problems or, or whatever, would that be a way of addressing some of the concerns that people have about, about parking?
Yes, Supervisor. The, um, to answer your first question, there are discretionary criteria in this local law that discuss things like street width, congestion, that type of thing. And absolutely, as a special permit application, that would be sent to Traffic and Safety Control from the Police Department, it would be sent to Legal, Building Department, so on and so forth. But if it is a street that has a greater propensity for parking issues, let's just say, or congestion with regard to getting emergency vehicles in and out, perhaps, that, that, that would be, you know, the, the block that maybe no ADUs should go on, and, and we would find that out accordingly with, you know, through the process. So, um, that type of thing is, um, I believe adequately addressed in the local law, notwithstanding the fact that parking is, is, is a concern and an issue, and we'll continue to think about it in that context.
The other, you know, question I have, and we've discussed this before, is, is people sometimes get over nervous about, you know, proposals. And based on the research, you know, I've done, most of the villages in the town of Greenberg that have it, there's practically, there's a handful of people in each community that are, are doing this. Would we be able to, um, at least, or the town board could at least think about having, say, a sunset, you know, provision? So let's say we try the law first, right now, the proposal says it's up to twenty-five a year. So, uh, so let's say we had, we approved, you know, the legislation, and we said at the end of the, the first year, um, we would basically, the law would die and would have to be reintroduced and re-approved, uh, or modified. This way, if there's no negative impact to the law, you know, we would be able to find, find out, we could also tweak the law and, and improve it, and almost test it as a, you know, as a pilot. Because I know there's people who have legitimate parking issues, but there's also many seniors who have contacted me at times, saying they just can't afford to live in their homes. And also, as Alicia, you know, as you said, there are people who have improper dwelling units in their homes, and this might be a way of also eventually cleaning it up and legalizing it.
If I may, um, ADUs are a new idea. They used to be called mothers', mother-in-law apartments, and, you know, for a reason, so do keep that in mind. And, um, the, the, as far as sunsetting it after a year, the, the process takes a little bit longer than that, but, you know, the, the, it's, it's not just the, the River towns. Actually, if you go on, I think the Westchester County Planning Board has, has a chart that shows all the ADUs throughout Westchester. Uh, there, there are links to each of those laws to, to look at. So if you are really interested in seeing where the, where they stand, and what they've done, and what kind of usage, you can probably find that out there.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I, I think sunset is an extreme measure. Certainly, we would want to revisit after a year. With regard to the twenty-five cap, that number is, you know, is just kind of, you know, just a placeholder. The, the point is a number. Um, you know, perhaps the number is, is less, could, it could be ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five. Um, you know, we, we can have that discussion. Um, you know, I don't know that our department would want to process twenty-five applications in one year, and yeah, it'd be a lot of work. But I don't think you'd even approach that anyway, so a lower number may make sense. Um, I've taken good notes here, and I just want to say that we've gotten a lot of great comments from residents. I do want to just make a couple of notes about process. Um, the town board indicated that, you know, it's, it's preferences not to close the public hearing tonight. I support that, I think that makes a lot of sense. I said that yesterday at the work session. Um, my recommendation process-wise is this, we're going to get the transcript, thanks for your hard work, I'll try and not go too quick. Um, we want to really, you know, in a formal way, get all the comments that have made, been made tonight, much better than, you know, the notes that I took here tonight, and get like responses in a Q and A format, so that we can post it on the website. I, I do think, you know, once we get those comments, and I'm sure there's more comments we need to hear, so, you know, certainly, you know, emailing in comments to publiccomment@greenbergny, and putting ADU in the title with your questions and comments, you know, I get that email, town board members get that email. Um, if there are additional questions out there, we'll add that to the Q and A. I, I personally am reaching out to the leadership at the CGCA, and I sent them some questions that I wasn't able to answer at the meeting when I met Monday night. Uh, I fully intend to, you know, get answers on those questions from Assessors Department, or Building Department, whoever it is. So we want to develop a good database of the questions, which will inform changes to this law, and I'm sure make it better, at least as the next proposal. I think it would be a mistake to, you know, have another public hearing and post the same local law. What I think should happen is the town board, at some point in the next few weeks, should get into work session, and we can revisit these questions, and make modifications, if you deem a fit to do so, so that we post an updated local law in advance of a subsequent public hearing. And again, take comments, and we'll see where we're at. But I do think we heard a lot of good comments tonight, and, you know, I think it's been a good discussion.
And I like Doreen's suggestion of having a community meeting, and maybe, just like as part of an education, where we could reach out to other communities that have ADUs, and maybe get some of the, and, and, you know, property owners who have taken advantage to speak, because I feel that if the, the more education we do, the more there'll be buy-in for any decision we make. The other question, you know, I just have, and I just thought of this, is, um, when we have zoning, you know, zoning change requests, the neighbors are notified. So if, if there is an ADU application under this law with the, with the neighbors who are living near the proposed ADU, be notified in advance of a permit being granted?
Yeah, they would. It would be a standard letter in the mail, similar to subdivision, special permit, you know, steep slope applications.
So residents, like, say, Elizabeth, if, if there would be one proposed on your street, you'd have an opportunity to go to the planning board and say, look at all these parking issues, it's not suitable for this particular location. There may be locations in the town that don't have the parking problems.
That's the idea, yes?
Mr. Finer, you said my questions need to be answered. Okay, you have your questions, and this is...
Please, please, Mr. Samas, that's out of order.
This is a public hearing.
And you had your time to speak, and we will have follow-up hearings.
There are one or two questions that I heard that I think are, um, simple responses. There are some that are more good comments, good comments that I think require discussion amongst the board. But, you know, could you convert to a condo? No. Um, you know, should there be some sort of rent control? That's, that's a discussion that needs to be had. Um, you know, why would there be a four hundred square foot minimum? Micro apartments in the city are, you know, can be as low as, I think, three hundred square feet, so, um, not, not a yes or no question, or I don't have a good answer for that right now, but it's a discussion we should have. Maybe, maybe there should be a modification there. Could you rent to a corporation? And I think I want to offline, get some more information about what that means, but, um, yeah, so. We'll get the transcript, and anything I missed, we'll make sure to get a good, better answer for you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner, do you have a recommendation as to what date the hearing should be put out to?
I guess the number that jumps out at me would be, we want to give it, I don't know, perhaps November thirteenth might make sense. Gives us a full month to liaison with the public, get some of these questions and answers, and gives you an opportunity to, um, you know, discuss this in work session, so that we can retool the law, if that's what the board so chooses. I just, I think November thirteenth is a meeting, it's the second Wednesday.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. That, that's my recommendation.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
So I'd like to, do we want to do the November thirteenth?
That works.
You do, you need to close and have a vote.
We need to close and vote on it.
We're adjourning the hearing, I'm moving, are we adjourning the hearing to November thirteenth?
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next hearing, uh, hearing to consider a local law which would establish accessory dwelling units as a special permit use with related updates to section two eighty-five five, two eighty-five-ten, two eighty-five-thirty-six, two eighty-five-thirty-eight, and two eighty-five-thirty-nine of the Code of the Town of Greenberg, TB twenty-three-oh-nine. I'd like to move that. We open the hearing.
Second.
Well, in favor, aye?
Aye.
Good evening, Supervisor Finer, town council members. For the record, Garrett Keating, Commissioner of the Department of Community Development and Conservation. The public hearing tonight is a continuation of the hearing held on September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, related to a...
related to a zoning text amendment which seeks to allow and regulate accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, in the one-family residence districts of the town by special permit approval of the planning board. The updated local law that supports the hearing tonight contains some proposed modifications which were demarcated in red font on the draft, several of which from the planning board's recommendation. The changes reflected in the updated ADU local law are described as follows. Inclusion of a one-time $4,320 recreation fee for each new ADU into Section 250-19 of the town code. Clarification that ADUs are also special permit uses in the planned unit development district. Addition of an approval mechanism for ADUs to be approved in connection with future subdivision and site plan applications that come before the planning board at a not-to-exceed rate of 20% or 2-on-10 rate. Planning board recommendations supported this concept, but advocated for a higher density of 1/3 or 33% ADU allowance. For anyone that may be wondering if this provision would apply retroactively to the Elmwood subdivision or other approved subdivisions, the answer would be no. It would apply only to subdivisions filed after the effective date of an approved ADU local law, if the town board so chooses to ultimately approve such. Section 5, or the access criteria section of the law, was updated to give approval flexibility for existing homes that already have two front doors. This was a planning board recommendation. Section 8, owner occupancy section, was updated to reference a common ownership clause. Section 15 was renamed to neighborhood character and reflects language that the planning board recommended, providing the planning board with more clear discretion to deny an application. Section 285.56, site plan exemptions, was updated to expressly identify that ADUs do not require site plan approval. Mind you, applicants would still have to submit a site plan. It would just be subject to special permit approval, but they wouldn't have to go that extra step and file for site plan approval. And the last change that I want to speak of, and it was made for the local law in advance of tonight, an update on the, which previously set a range of 400 to 800 square feet within not to exceed 30% of existing gross floor area, is proposed. The previous local law also did not differentiate size parameters for ADUs that are internal to a home versus external. So we've made those updates at the direction of the town board. The updated size parameters still retain the 400 to 800 square foot range for ADUs for internal to a home, and additionally assign a max 20% of gross floor area allowance. For ADUs external to a home, the updated size parameters still retain the 400 to 800 square foot range, and additionally, additionally assign a 30% gross floor area restriction. So what does this mean? As an example, for a homeowner with a 2,500 square foot home, this 30% control would allow for a maximum 750 square foot detached ADU, as opposed to the otherwise 800 square foot max. A modest difference, but the rationale for this type of change is to minimize the home-size to ADU-size ratio to better preserve neighborhood character, which is a concern we've heard from town board members. If there are other changes that the town board seeks based on its observations, based on the public input that we hear tonight, I'm here to listen and assist. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett.
Commissioner.
And just a reminder, before the clerk calls the first speaker, this hearing is to our regular rules, five minutes per person, and there will be no second round unless we're adjourning the hearing tonight. Our first speaker on the ADUs is Walter Simon.
First of all, on this hearing, the timing could not have been worse. Here we are in the middle of December, a very busy time, and the first time we got notice of this hearing was Monday, where a considerable amount of members of the, of the AVL are out of town, unable to attend the meeting. In fact, I'm the only one in the whole group that's here tonight. We did not have the opportunity to even call one another, conference one another, absolutely nothing. I did not have the time to really look at these changes, analyze those changes, and come up with some sort of response. But now I'm limited to five minutes to talk about it. I mean, this is totally unacceptable way of proceeding with this. The AVL proposed the legislation. We proposed the legislation, but now we're restricted to five minutes to talk about it. It would seem to me that the town has the absolute right to change the proposal. I'm not arguing about that. But seeing how the AVL proposed the legislation, we should have been given the heads up and say, "This is what we're proposing," and give us an opportunity to opine on that. No, this is a very important thing, benefit to the town. I was at a meeting just last week for a presentation for senior citizens, and one of the speakers there was from Westchester County. I don't recall the exact name of his apartment, but they focused on the seniors in Westchester County. And they said 59% of the seniors in Westchester County is housing stressed, 59%. Now, this is a proposal that could help. I spoke to Hugh McAlde, who's head of the, of the...
Veterans.
Veterans Affairs. And I spoke to him earlier about the law. He said, "This is exactly what the veterans in Westchester needs." He's not here because he's busy. He can't come here to talk. Look at, look at the audience. This is a terrible day to close this hearing. This hearing needs to be proposed, be postponed to sometime in January, and you need to put it back in a work session, where you invite people from the veterans group. You invite the AVL. You invite someone from Westchester County who's involved...
Is that Ronnie Cox that you're talking about? Ronnie Cox?
Yeah, yeah. Who's involved in senior housing. Now, get all the facts on the table. Then at least the town board will be able to make a decision based on facts. Analyze the facts, and not just to rush this through at the last minute and only give people two days to respond, and then restrict them to five minutes of discussion. So this...
Twice, five minutes twice.
No, I...
You get a second round?
Perhaps, perhaps.
Yeah, but no. But, yeah, but even five minutes twice without proper preparation is meaningless. Okay, so I just wish this will be, this actually go back into work session, so you can really get all the facts involved, and then make a decision based upon facts.
You know, I agree with you 100%. I think that we should never adopt a major, you know, new law during the holiday season in December. You know, we're having, I remember years ago, there was a tradition in the town, we didn't even have public hearings in December, because, you know, it's, you know, people can't attend, people are preoccupied. This is really important, so, you know, at the conclusion of this hearing, I'd like to, I'm going to suggest that we adjourn the hearing to the first meeting in January, and then we would basically give people an opportunity to, you know, review it during the next couple of weeks, and then comment, and hopefully we could continue to approve on the law. But I agree with you 100% that it shouldn't be voted on in December. We're closed, the hearing closed.
We have any intent by the board to close the hearing tonight. The reason why we're having a hearing tonight is because it was noticed on agendas for quite some time, and maybe somebody saw that, and we didn't want somebody to show up and find out that they couldn't speak. But under no circumstances were we going to close the hearing tonight, going to adjourn it after we hear whoever does show up tonight, and have a meeting in January. Which meeting in January? I don't know.
Just so the record is complete, this is a continuation of a hearing which started in September. It was originally adjourned until the November 13th meeting. When that meeting occurred, there was a posting put online that it was being additionally delayed until the December 11th meeting tonight. So there was about a month notice to the public, but it sounds like it will be adjourned again to January, have additional time for additional comments.
Next speaker, we have Mr. Mark Panter.
Good evening to the town of Greenberg, the board members. Mr. Finer. It could help a lot of people, especially seniors. My taxes have tripled in the last 25 years that I lived here. Do I still want to live here, tripling my taxes? An ADU could help us. Maybe one of our children or one of our grandchildren could move into the unit and help us in our, in our older age. We need help from the town. I think seniors do need help from the town, in any shape or form. The second dwelling, it shouldn't be just like a single-room occupancy place. It should be a real home. It should be a home that somebody is proud to build in the town of Greenberg. There are a lot of beautiful homes in the town of Greenberg. There are a lot of lots and back lots of a lot of older homes. My home was built in 1898, based on Edgar Allan Poe's home in the Bronx. It has a huge back lot. The tax increases that would be proposed for this ADU should be, the assessment should be not initial, initially incurred. It should have some kind of period, like Walmart gets, a period of time of tax abatement, so that the cost of the building, this beautiful building, I suspect most people who want to build ADUs are not going to build something that's not. And of course, we're going to have to follow the rules of the town. I'm not, I'm not a legal scholar or anything like that. Parking has got to be a key component to the ADU, whether it be a car park, or a car garage, or something. The town of Greenberg cannot incur additional cars without parking. It's the main mode of transportation in town Greenberg. Look at our shopping centers. They're full to capacity, most of them. The grants that the state is proposing to help people build these things, I think the town should help us do that. I have no idea how to access these grants, or to get this money that the state would like us to build these things. So I would wish that the town would help us on that. It would make it more affordable also. Not everybody has the funds to build a house. Maybe in the town's excellent capacity to get credit, they could help people with the banks. The banks are always not very willing to talk to individual people, and are very hard to deal with. And it shouldn't be a burden on an elderly person, or a person who wants to build an ADU, so that they don't, do not in the future get into financial trouble with this ADU. That's all I have to say on ADUs. I hope it goes through somehow, and I hope the state hasn't put a time limit on it. I don't know what the laws are exactly. But thank you so much.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I'm sort of wondering, because I think this was really effective. You really are a terrific speaker.
Thank you.
So I'm really impressed. But, and, you know, you really made a really good case. Would you be able to, you know, between now and the next hearing, meet with the Commissioner of Planning, Garrett?
Absolutely.
You could, Garrett, maybe you could review what he, what you'd like to do. And I would be curious, because, you know, some people think the law's too, the proposed law's too restrictive, or some people think that we should have more restrictions. So I'd like to see if you would be, if your house would qualify under, under the proposed, you know, the proposed law. And then, you know, maybe what we could do is, I could reach out also to the state, you know, between now and January. Yeah, I'd reach out to all the resources that are available, and then see if, you know, what you want to do, you know, could really happen, and what obstacles you would, you know, you would have, because the goal of the ADU legislation is to get something, to get ADUs, you know, built in the town, not to say, "Oh, we're doing something and nobody applies." So if you could arrange a meeting with Garrett?
So you're being like the supervisor of like a case study?
Yeah, I would just be curious, because, you know, I thought this was really great, you know, I'd love to hear from people who want to do this. And then we look at your, and then if, you know, there could be other people in the community, they could also, between now and January, say, you know, "I'm really interested in it." And then you look at the law that you drafted, and does the law apply to them?
I would agree to anything that you propose.
So, yeah, so he's right over there, so maybe you could set up a time to meet with him?
We've already, prior to this...
You could be our, our case study.
Absolutely. The lines of communication for all ADUs should be open and transparent. There shouldn't be barriers. Barriers should come down. Transparency and communication should come up. I just want to add one last thing. I live in a property that was built in 1898 by Mrs. Wilson. Mrs. Wilson owned this property, and lots of property on Wilson Street and beyond. And she, she had a vision for East Hartsdale. She had a vision of all these houses that came about, and most of them were on her properties. And that's what I proposed today, building another house on Mrs. Wilson's property. I'm sure I'd meet with Garrett anytime he says.
This is really terrific. Thank you. I'll see you in January.
Sir, can you please state your name and the spelling for the record?
Sure. My name is Mark, M-A-R-C, and my last name is Panter, P-A-N-T-I-R-E-R. My wife is sitting there. Her name is Julia. And we live at 18 Wilson Street, Hartsdale, New York. We've lived there for 25 years, 10530.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for asking for that clarification. And any other further speakers, please state your name and address. Thank you very much. No problem.
Next, for the hearing, the ADU hearing, Mr. Howes-Samas.
I just want to say something. Kimberly did email me at 5:40 and at 6:35, $1 million in vacant positions across the departments. Hmm, okay. Now, this hearing. First, I want to compliment Garrett. He knows that I'm after him on many issues, but unlike other departments, Garrett supplies me always with the information I request. He needs to be patted on the back for that. And today, he just handed me this. This is really not my hot-button ADUs, but, so basically, what I have to talk about is questions. Because when I first, even though I spent a career in New York City commercial real estate, ADUs is entirely new to me. So from my quick read of what he gave me, I'm kind of curious as to certain things. I thought originally the idea of ADUs in Greenberg was to create affordable housing. A misuse term, but basically, the question then is, how are the rents set by the landlords? Are there any controls over them? If it's an in-house... If it's an in-house ADU that's created, is, can there be a door connected to the owner's portion of the building? In other words, if I were to create an ADU, could I be expanding my house? Is there any requirement actually to rent an ADU once it's established? There is a charge to do so, because the Parks Department is very greedy and likes to consider that the one and two family homeowner is now a real estate developer, because we have a developers' fund which charges for units to go into the park's budget as revenue. I think it's kind of unfair to charge someone who may in fact be creating the type of units that you're looking to create, to charge him a fee for doing that. On top of that, I have to wonder about, when you create an AD unit, does it get any special treatment in terms of setbacks that may exist? For all the requirements of what your AD unit must be, does it still have to conform with the other requirements of Greenberg's development? So basically, can this end up as just offering more space to the owner than his existing house? And really, I'd like to know how the rents are set and... Well, I won't ask it this hearing. That's it.
Can I just make a comment? I mean, that's actually a very interesting point that Hal made. What is the requirement, once the desire to go forward with an ADU has, and you go forward with those plans, what is the fulfillment of that? How is the requirement of that actually being filled by another tenant as opposed to it being increased space in the home? I mean, are there sort of stipulations for that? How would we, how is that monitored? Is that anything that we, I mean, we never even thought of that, that that could be a mechanism for increasing the size or whatever someone's home that actually, and you know, however, if you're, to Hal's point though, if one were to be establishing an ADU and presumably paying a Parks and Rec fee, so that would be an onus if you did not fulfill that requirement, right? So, but it is an interesting question.
Yeah, I also would like to follow up on, you know, Hal's comments, because you're right, you know, with ADUs, it makes it easier for seniors, many who can't afford to live here without the ADUs to stay in their homes, but currently, there's no requirement in the law that who they rent to, those homes don't have to be affordable. So one of the thoughts that I had as a result of, you know, your presentation would be to petition the state legislature, you know, and the governor to maybe authorize a reduction in assessment increases. If property owners would commit to keeping the units at affordable rentals, because let's say, you know, you want to build an ADU and all of a sudden your taxes go up a lot, you're going to have to charge more rent. On the other hand, if one of the goals is to encourage younger people who are starting out by allowing them to pay affordable, you know, having more affordable rental opportunities and we're not increasing the assessments, we might be able to create more affordable housing, but if we wouldn't be increasing your assessments.
A couple of things maybe in the fine print that I'm missing, but if someone's going, wants to put an addition on their house, make their house larger, why would they bother calling it an ADU? You know, either you increase the size of the house or you don't. Secondly, in terms of affordability, some of the affordability might be for seniors, as Mr. Panterer mentioned, creating an apartment. Maybe the apartment is for the seniors, and that's the affordable part of it, although they own the house. And their family members, maybe their children and grandchildren move into the larger remainder part of the house. So it just flips around a bit too. So there are lots of ways to look at it, and it's hard to, I would imagine, create a one-size-fits-all on that.
Right, but you know, one of the things also, I've reached out to all the villages in the town, and most of the villages, even though they had lengthy hearings and a lot of discussions, very few people are participating. And I think one of the reasons is because if the assessments go up and there's all, and we're not doing enough to make it easy for people to have it, that's what, you know, so, you know, they're in name saying we have these ADU legislation, but practically nobody's participating. And that's why I think, you know, there's a new state legislative session, and maybe in January, we could try coming up with different concepts. You know, I'm not saying my concept is, is the one that has to be adopted, but maybe we could just reflect on it and get other ideas and then ask the state to consider some of the proposals, and then we could create more affordable housing options through this.
Can I ask the question that I, that I'll walk on? Take 10 seconds.
You have 1 minute and 35 seconds left.
Yeah, come up.
How long a lease can be created, can be created? Can you, how long a lease can be created? And if, and one year with an option to renew for 30 years? Those kinds of questions.
Would the commissioner come up? We can answer some of the...
Make sure everyone have a chance to speak. There might be other speakers. I did have a question if there's someone on Zoom named Matthew Fortunato. He may want to speak.
Okay, let's have all the speakers.
There was someone with their hand raised on Zoom.
Yeah, let's go through all of them.
Okay, great. So sorry to be late. Let's hear from everyone. I'm making good notes.
Great.
Any other speakers in attendance first?
Yes, please. Next, we will have Dr. Carol Allen on the ADUs.
Good evening. My name is Carol Allen. I reside at 19 Beechwood Road. Good evening, everyone. The purpose of allowing the accessory drilling units is to provide the opportunity to develop rental housing units designed for small households, relatives of existing families within the town, the elderly, and persons seeking more affordable options. Creation of these units will provide economic support to existing residents, better facilitate aging in place, and protect and preserve property values. So with these goals in mind, I offer the following comments. A minimum lot size of 10,000 or 20,000 square feet, depending upon whether the ADU is detached or not, is required. What percentage of single-family homes in Greenberg are therefore excluded from eligibility to construct units? And in what part of the town are these smaller properties located? Why have you inserted a requirement for a one-year lease term? Renting the unit to college students or faculty who need the unit for only nine or 10 months should be allowed. Regarding community character, what is a substandard street width? Does the town have a map of all existing streets which are of substandard width? Where are these streets located? Have you determined whether this requirement will adversely affect certain segments of the town? ADUs will be costly. Homeowners will be required to engage architects, apply for and pay for various permits, and bear the construction costs. You have added a requirement for $4,320 recreational land fee. This additional fee may prove to be the item that makes the project cost prohibitive for those on fixed incomes who expect the ADU to provide their needed economic support. If the law is passed in its current form, you will have a law on the books, but it will fail to adequately address the problems that you are trying to solve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will have Teresa Torrey speaking on the ADUs.
Good evening. Little background on Teresa Torrey. I reside at 100 Poe Street, Hartsdale, New York. This idea, or some variation of it, comes out of the master plan, which I was a member of the master plan committee when that was done. I was also, am a member of the ADL community committee. One of the things to point out is that, one of the big differences between the law we have before us now and what came out of the ADL versus what came out of the planning board is the issue of lot size. That was something that has a difference from what was recommended. One of the things that I felt about this, as I think about it as a homeowner, I'm very pleased that we're keeping the existing zoning in place as chair of the CAC, because this will limit any extra stress in terms of impervious surface, because all of the existing zoning stays in place. But one of the things I think we might want to consider, so that we don't get caught up in the type of thing where we have, at other meetings, we've had stronger opposition, but I agree wholeheartedly with Walter, it's just the wrong time of year to have a meeting, much less the weather tonight, is that sometimes when an idea is new, some folks think it's a fabulous idea, some folks think it's a terrible idea. We really don't know how this will work out until we do it. And one of my suggestions would be, as I look over the law, is that currently, number 14 cap limit, the town board should have the ability to institute a cap on the number of AD units issued annually per zoning district as a total of the town through resolution. I'm going to make a suggestion, which I think probably my ADL community would not, committee would not like, but my suggestion would be, let's pick a number, put a cap, and see what happens. We can always come back and change that number up or down, depending on what we find. But the way it's written now, if you had, and I don't think we're going to have this surge of people, based on other communities coming in, but I think it would be a reassurance for people who might continue to push against this, if they knew that there was a cap, that we're going to try it out and see what happens, see how the process works. That would also give us a stop point to go back and look at the process and say, is what's wrong with it? What's good about it? Are we overly concerned? Are we underly concerned? It'll give us a chance to start to have some metrics on where the requests are coming from. So that would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Yeah, one of the, you know, one of the thoughts, you know, that I had, and I suggested was to put a one-year sunset provision. You know, the probability is that, like, the first year, we're not going to have more than, you know, I think if we're lucky, we'll have 10 homes, probably less. So let's say we said for the, this law is only in existence for a year, and, you know, we see how it works during the year. At the end of the year, there's a sunset provision, so the law has to either be reapproved or modified. And if we put like, if we know that the probability is that there's going to be 10, maybe 10 people, or, you know, it's not going to be, I don't think there's a likelihood that it's going to be more than 10. So if we say, we're going to try it out with 10, we're going to put a, you know, a one-year sunset provision, then I feel that some of the people who at the last hearing had concerns about it will be less concerned. We could all, and I think once people see that this is working, that there'll be more, that there'll be more support. And then we could also look at, you know, some of the affordability issues. I personally don't like the idea of the recreation fee. And, you know, one of the, one of the thoughts that I had as a result of Dr. Allen's, you know, suggestion was possibly to say, you know, if somebody, you know, makes the unit affordable and keeps to affordable rents, that we would waive the $4,000, you know, fee as sort of like an incentive. So, you know, we could, these are the types of things that could be tested out between now and, you know, in January, you know, when we, when we hold our hearing. But I basically, you know, I think that anything we could do that could make people who are panicking about this feel better about it, but, you know, get some legislation actually approved and test it out and then say we're going to be constantly tweaking it, I think that's the way of going. And we could really have a very successful law, I think.
If I may, I think a one-year sunset clause is a little bit too short. And I would say that, you know, the Westchester Municipal Officers Association did a very comprehensive study, for instance. And I think that the ADL committee did avail themselves of that and some of the information that was derived from that. But the, I know, for instance, in Hastings, they had an ADU law in place, and over time, they amended it. So there was an amendment. And still, and you're correct, that there are not that many, for those that fear that the town is going to be overrun by ADUs on the other end of the spectrum, that has not proven itself throughout Westchester, number one. Number two, I think that, that the idea is a great one that maybe hasn't caught on, as we are finding that affordability is so hard. And we can certainly tweak as we go along. I think that Ms. Torrey's suggestion is a good one.
Agreed. And just a point as to why the sunset clause, I don't believe, would work, is because when you are in the planning process of creating an ADU, and you're starting with one year, and then it potentially, the law could disappear, then your, people will be stuck.
No, I basically would say that if you submit a proposal, and it hasn't been, it hasn't been, once you submit it, like, if you submit it, let's say we pass it in January and you submit it in April, you know, and, you know, the law was filed with the Secretary of State, you know, and so it starts in March and you submit it in April, takes some time to get your ducks in order. Once you submit it, then...
Well, you have to be able to submit it all the way till November or December.
No, you could, you could submit it up till a year. It doesn't have to be approved by then, but, you know, and I'm saying, these are the types of things we could, you know, we could think about. But, you know, again, all the villages, I wrote to all the villages in Greenberg, and, you know, I think Hastings might have had like about 20 over a period of time.
Hastings was the only one with double digits. The rest were five or less.
Yeah.
And that was over a longer period of time. It wasn't a year's time.
Correct, yeah.
In some total, actually.
That's why Teri's suggestion of putting a number, a cap, you know, could work, because the probability is we're not going to exceed the cap anyway, whether we have it or not.
Was there someone online? Did we want to speak?
I think, I believe Terrence can put that person in.
If anyone is online and wants to speak on the Zoom, please unmute your mic or send a chat or put your hand up and we'll...
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Hey, thank you. Sorry, I had to go into a different room because my kids are sleeping. My name's Matt Fortunato. I live at Allen One Edge Park Road in White Plains. Been at this address for about five years, came up from Brooklyn, and I only have good things to say about Greenberg. We have a beautiful 15-month-old daughter and another daughter on the way. And unfortunately, my parents had to move away due to being on a fixed income and, you know, they can't afford New York state taxes anymore. So the ADU law is very appealing to me, because my parents have done so much for me. I'd like to put one in my home to give them a place to come stay with us when they come up from Florida for four or five months of the summer, because over the last three years, it's cost them $10,000 to $12,000 for three months in Airbnbs, because unfortunately, I don't have the space in a three-bedroom house to allow them to stay. So the ADU law would give me the option to let them stay six months of the year up here in New York with their grandchildren. You know, it also would help me with childcare costs, as those are $3,000, $4,000 a month, not only helping my parents as well as my children. And I think the ADU law provides a good balance. I went so far to even have an architect come out to my house, because I was under the impression this was already the law when I read it on the town's website, but the architect informed me that it's... But the architect informed me that it's still proposed, and he encouraged me to come to this meeting and speak up. And, you know, I think, first and foremost, you know, for elderly parents, my parents aren't elderly, but for, you know, retired people on fixed incomes, this gives children an option to give back to their parents. And vice versa, it gives people who already own a home in Westchester a chance to age in place while giving back to their children. You know, there is also the side of the affordable housing for other residents and other young people who need places to live while they save up. You know, I was very blessed to be able to buy a house in Greenberg right before COVID. You know, and me and my wife, you know, I work two full-time jobs, she works one, just to live in Westchester. It's a struggle. But, you know, I could say that affordable housing is very, very important in Westchester, especially with the taxes and the cost of living of everything else in New York. So I'm totally for this law. I do not see any downside. I'd love to hear people's perspective on the downside, because the only good things could come from this. Only people could benefit from coming into the community and being a part of the community. You know, so that's my take on the law. Thank you for letting me speak.
Can I just ask you, you know, one question? First of all, I really appreciate that you're speaking, and this is really what democracy is all about, because this hearing's been, I'd say, one of the best hearings we've had since I've been supervisor. And, you know, it's really great to see people like you participating, the people who we normally don't hear from. But the other thought that I had is, would you be willing to meet with the commissioner of planning, and he could look at your, you know, your house, and you could, between now and January, I just want to see if the proposed law...
So we're going to have another case study?
No, I want to have, right, because, you know, the whole key, you know, some people who have been advocating the ADU legislation feel the law is too restrictive. So we now have two people in the community who say they want to participate in the ADUs. So I'd like to see if your house complies, and your house complies under the proposed law. And then we could see if, you know, the proposed law is restrictive enough, is too restrictive, or if it basically, you know, is, you know, is good. I think it would be really good information, you know, to have. But I'm really, like, so thrilled that you participated, and I hope you attend more town board meetings. You know, this was really, you know, really, really excellent. And we can make your, the baby, we can make her a deputy supervisor for playgrounds.
Thank you, Mr. Fortunato. Thank you.
It's like the Greenberg playgrounds.
Well, she could be deputy.
I'd be happy to meet with anybody, you know. I believe you all have my email. Happy to write my phone number in the chat. And thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I appreciate you.
So Garrett, will you meet with him, and then just analyze his house and what he wants to do?
Mr. Fortunato, can we just have the spelling of your name again, please?
Sir, it's F-O-R-T-U-N-A-T-O, and just Matt. I'm 30.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other speakers?
There's no other speakers on the list. Were there any, Terrence, are there any more speakers online? Thank you.
Okay, I took some notes, as long as I can read them. We're in good shape. Just want to address a couple of the questions that were raised. I do note that there's an FAQ on the web that was posted in addition to the updated local law, and it is an FAQ to answer some of the questions that have been raised. But let me try and briefly just address some of the questions. As far as the ADU's affordability, how are the rents set? That's just free market. So the discretion is at the owner of the ADU to charge what they feel is appropriate. And there is no rent control on the ADUs. And I do think Councilwoman Hendricks made a great point, that the ADU law attempts to achieve a variety of objectives. And may be affordable for some, if, let's say, senior can move into the ADU and rent out their home, that's an affordability component that I think one cannot deny. But, you know, really, I think, more globally, at the end of the day, you're providing a broader range of housing. So that's not all necessarily cost-based. It's just a larger spectrum of housing that we necessarily don't provide at the moment, and that's a positive.
That's a very important nuance, I think, to define. We talk about affordable housing, and that has a very specific definition, to say, it falls within certain parameters. And what we're really talking about is more affordable housing, like, housing that's more affordable.
Housing that's more affordable.
Housing that's more affordable, not increased affordable housing units.
It's de facto affordable.
I mean, for the public, for all of us to understand.
It could be potentially de facto affordable by virtue of...
It could be, but it's not an enforcement of what we define as affordable housing.
Right. Is the ADU, can, you know, when the in-house ADU, the question was, would there be locks on the doors? Is that permissible? There is actually specificity in the local law that says the door has to lock from both sides. So that's actually in there. The recreation fee, I'm not stating this to be a proponent or opponent of it, but I just want to state factually, the $4,320 would not go into parks' operation budget. The recreation escrow, which is one time, is set up to go for capital expenditure. So that money, that funds gets put into an escrow, which then the Parks Department comes to the town board and says, hey, the recreation escrow has $400,000 in it. We would like to use $100,000 to improve an ADA bathroom at fill-in-the-blank park. That's what that fund is all about. It's not buying, you know, pens and pencils at the Parks Department.
Garrett, could you just define what the, why that figure, where that comes from?
This was based from a 2005 recreation study, and it, at the time, analyzed the population of the town, general forecasting of future populations, cross-referenced that with the number of parks we have in the town, where they're located, and needs of the parks. And from that recreation needs assessment, it was the origin of assigning a recreation escrow requirement. And then that was further codified by the town of Greenberg, and it applies to all new single-family homes at a fee of $8,640, half that, $4,320 for the rentals, and so on and so forth. So that, that's for all new units. And it has, at times, when you get large projects, à la multifamily on tax road, 444 units, you get a check for $891,000. And that funding goes on to do great things, AKA, you know, ADA improvements, or just all kinds of improvements. So generally, it's a great thing.
Keeping in mind that it's not just a superfluous fee, that the residents of Greenberg and the potential ADUs would be using the parks, and there's a great deal of wear and tear in the parks, and a great deal of maintenance that's required. It's very costly.
In terms of just general lot and bulk controls, meaning setbacks, floor area ratio, Ms. Torrey correctly notified that the existing parameters in that sense are not changed. So I'll give you a quick example. Floor area ratio, in the town of Greenberg, that is authorized pursuant to a chart in the zoning ordinance, and it says, if you have X amount of square feet, your home on that size lot can be X amount of square feet. So the point is, let's say, on a 10,000-square-foot lot, let's say that yields a max 3,700-square-foot home. If you have a 3,700-square-foot home existing, you cannot then add on an 800-square-foot ADU, because you would go over. So that would trigger variance and would likely not be approved. If you convert some of that 3,700 square feet within your home, that would be permissible. But the underlying lot and bulk controls stay. That's setbacks, that's impervious coverage. You don't get a bonus, if you will, if you propose an ADU unit. So that, that also answers the question of, can you expand your home? Yes, if you have FAR flexibility in the manner that I just described. Okay. With regards to the, there is a provision in there that speaks to substandard street width. The standard street size in the town of Greenberg is 26 feet curb-to-curb, and many roads have that, many do not. What I would note is that in the ordinance, it doesn't say that if your street is 24 feet, you are not, you cannot get an ADU. It absolutely does not say that. It says, take street width into consideration. And in extreme instances, I think I've talked about this before, but that type of extreme instance would get flagged, and there are many roads where I think no one would want to propose an ADU, nor should one be approved. So that general consideration is in there, but it doesn't blanket exclude anyone if they're insufficient in that width size. As far as lot size, there was the question about 10,000 square foot, 20,000 square foot, and, you know, what percentage of lots in the town that house single-family homes are less than 10,000 square foot. We could absolutely run that numbers. The town's GIS system is amazing, and it's just a few clicks away. So the general, I guess, rule of thumb is, most lots in an R5 district, one-family residence district, R5 means 5,000-square-foot lot minimum. So majority of the R5 lots, R5 district, with the 10,000-square-foot max, would not meet the minimum requirement. Ditto that for R75, which is 7,500 square-foot minimum. So really, it's an exercise in identifying which percentage of those lots are, meet those requirements. I would note that the 10,000-square-foot minimum was not arbitrarily identified as a minimum lot size. The major consideration for that arises from concern for off-street parking. And, you know, just in an R5 district, the homes are on 5,000-square-foot lots, generally. And so it's kind of a tighter-knit, denser neighborhood. And those R5 lots in neighborhoods tend to have less off-street parking relief. And I go back to, I just want to remind the board that when, in the neighborhoods adjacent to Manhattan Avenue, which were typically 5,000-square-foot lots, when the town board removed the UR district, that was replaced with an R5 district, but it also accounted for the fact that many two-family homes had been built over time through that UR district. The reason I bring up this example is that when we rezoned the UR to the R5 district, all two families were grandfathered, and there was little to no pushback from residents about taking away the prospect of adding additional two-family homes. And a lot of that truly was based on the fact that a lot of that neighborhood, with the density of two-family homes that are interspersed, the off-street parking is a super challenge. And some of those roads indeed are not 26-foot curb-to-curb. So that was sort of some experience that identified that, you know, R5 districts that evolve with, let's say, you know, multiple two-families or multiple ADUs, there's a greater propensity for concern for off-street parking. So that's where the 10,000-square-foot was born out of. And the 20,000-square-foot is for the ADUs that are not within the home, as a reminder, and the 20,000. So that's a consideration of just trying to maximize larger sites that have the capacity to add an accessory ADU. I think I have one or two more left. The cap limit, I had spoke about this to the board. By resolution, the town board in this local law is authorized to put a cap. I think the supervisor indicated a number 10. I think that's a number I had spoke to the board about before. If you had asked me, what should we set, let's say, in the first year? 10 would be my recommendation. I don't suspect there would be 10 applications, but I think it's a reasonable number. That could always be revisited in the future. Ms. Allen answered one of the earlier questions about the lease. It's one year minimum. Why is that? I see some model laws, or not some model laws, you see variability. Some have six months, some have a year, many have a year. You know, it's the opposite in Airbnb. You have to have some lease term, and a year seemed reasonable. I think that's most of the questions that we heard there. And I know we're going to come back in January, so we'll have another opportunity to answer more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So would the board basically like to extend it to the first meeting in January the 2nd?
The meetings are on January 8th and January 22nd.
January 8th.
No, January 22nd, yeah. January 8th, we're just going back to vacation.
Yeah, January 22nd, we're going to be having presentation, a long presentation to Adel House. So just keep that. That's really...
So I'd like to move that we adjourn the hearing to January 22nd.
I just want to comment. Every time we talk about ADUs, we get into a discussion about affordable housing and so forth. The proposal that was sent to the town board does not have the word "affordable" anywhere in that proposed law. We heard tonight about people who want their loved ones to come back, because, you know, they want to take care of them and so forth. There's really no additional consideration for that kind of a thing. We don't know whether or not they're going to be affordable. It may be that a clearly not affordable house builds a clearly not affordable, by our term, ADU. And they can get whatever the rate is, particularly depending on what school district it's in. I don't know how we regulate that, if the purpose is for affordable housing. Now, if you want to say, well, we're just, you know, trying to increase the housing stock, well, that's a different story. But we keep talking about this as if it's going to be for affordability. And it's a complex thing, because we are conflating, basically, somebody who is struggling to stay in their home, so they build an ADU, or they convert their house to be an ADU. So it helps the current homeowner to be affordable, to be more affordable. But it may be that a person who is wealthy wants to build an ADU simply to have more income. And I don't know if that's the purpose of the law, or why there should be a change to the zoning in a single-family zone. These are complex issues, and I don't think we fully have them worked out yet.
Well, again, you know, as I said before, you know, one ways of making it affordable, more affordable, the rents would be to get the state legislature to authorize the assessor not to increase assessments of somebody, you know, did an ADU and committed to keeping the unit, you know, affordable. And if the rents are not, doesn't stay affordable, then the assessments would go, you know, would go up. So I feel that between now and January 22nd, we could look at ways of making this truly a win-win for, like, everybody.
Well, you know, there's another way of looking at that, too. If someone is going to the expense of building an ADU and must charge affordable, make the rates affordable, then if that's what you're, you're talking about taxes, I understand. But, you know, that kind of goes to the upkeep and the maintenance of the town, for the roads that now are going to get greater usage for the parks, as we discussed before. That is one aspect. So that's what the taxes go for. Not, and certainly, we'd want to make it more affordable, but that is, we are talking about coming up with a plan that would make market-rate housing so that there is more affordable housing, you know, housing that is affordable, and that's a separate end issue altogether.
But this is a drop in the bucket, if we're talking about more affordable housing. Let's face it, this is just, you know, really what Frances is saying. It's really more to accommodate particular situations where there could potentially be more affordability for the owner of the house or whatever. But we're not, this is not, we're not going to solve our affordable housing situation with ADUs. So I think everyone should understand that this is not our intention to do that, right? This is just another measure that helps with an aspect of it.
But all I could say is that, to me, this is like an opportunity, because, like, I read all these city and state publications, all these government publications. I know the governor is supportive of, you know, ADUs. And I know that New York state has a big affordable housing, you know, shortage. So the thing is, if we take advantage of the fact that you have a governor who basically wants to promote affordable housing, governor who wants to support ADUs, we could take advantage of the upcoming state legislative session and propose initiatives that could make it easier to have ADU, affordable ADU units. And, you know, if they do this, if, you know, if the state would partner with local governments and try creating affordable housing opportunities with ADUs, there could be a lot of ADUs around the state that will, will be built. The easier you make it, the more people are going to want to participate. The easier you make it, the more people are going to want to participate in this. And, you know, I just think the ADU concept is really one, one approach that could make Greenberg a little bit more, you know, affordable. There's definitely a housing shortage all over, all over New York State and all over the country.
I believe the Commissioner wanted to say so.
One last thing. In light of, I'm hearing, there's a very important public hearing on the second meeting in January. Is there any potential to do the continue, and I don't want to push this off any further than it needs to, the second, the first or second meeting in February, you have a huge grant deadline at the end of January, which is going to be a major push. So either meeting in February.
The first meeting in February.
First meeting in February, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, what day is that?
The 3rd, I think.
It's February 12th.
No. Is that the 3rd?
It's the 2nd Wednesday of the month.
That sounds correct.
Okay. So I'd like to move that we adjourn the meeting to February, you know, 12th?
2nd.
7:30. All in favor?
Aye.
So now I'd like to open up the public hearing. First one is to consider a local law that would establish accessory dwelling units as a special permit use with related updates to Section 285, 5285, 10, 28536, 28538, 28539 of the Code of the Town of Greenberg. I'd like to move that we open up the hearing.
2nd.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have Garrett Duquesne.
Meeting Supervisor Finer, Town Council members. For the record, Garrett Duquesne, Commissioner of the Department of Community Development and Conservation. This public hearing is a continuation of the hearing held on September 25th, 2024, and December 11th, 2024, related to a zoning text amendment which seeks to regulate and permit accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, in the one-family residence districts of the town by special permit approval of the planning board. The updated local law that supports the hearing tonight contains one modification, which was demarcated in red font and posted on the town website, clarifying not to exceed percentages related to floor area ratio. At the last hearing in December, two residents that spoke indicated that they had interest in pursuing ADUs at their residences. I was asked by the supervisor to review those and provided indication that those proposals appeared to comply with some of the lot size and other requirements. Following the December ADU hearing, Supervisor Finer sent an email blast to those subscribing to the GB list and solicited additional input from residents that had interest in pursuing an ADU on their property. Fourteen additional residents emailed in with responses with their addresses and identified the type of ADU that they may see if the local law is approved, whether that be within the existing home, as a garage conversion, or as a separate freestanding accessory structure. The purpose of that outreach was to just get a sense of the local law that's proposed, and to get a sense of how that, those, the desires of residents that express interest do or do not meet some of the major parameters. So focusing on the lot sizes of those expressing interest, I reviewed whether those with the interest met the minimum lot sizes associated with the proposed local law, and also looked at the existing residents' floor area ratios to ensure that there was available FAR remaining. Based on this, some of my findings are as follows. The local laws presently comprised would facilitate eligible ADU proposals consistent with the types of ADUs that residents expressed interest in building. Focusing on lot size, over 60% of those that had expressed interest in an ADU would be eligible to propose some type of ADU on their property. At least six of those with interest in this rather small sample size had sufficient lot sizes that would make the ADU proposal eligible when factoring, factoring in the type of ADU that that individual resident had interested. Should an ADU local law be approved, I note that the town board has expressed interest in receiving follow-up information regarding implementation of the law. As all ADU applications would require a special permit processed by the Department of Community Development and Conservation, I submit that it will not be difficult to track and report annually to the town board the number of applications received, the number of applications approved or denied, the volume of just general calls received related to potential ADUs, and some, some information on the input received by residents at public hearings associated with ADU applications. The town board could use this information to evaluate any range of potential changes to the law, whether that be minor modifications, full-scale repeal of the law, no changes, or other. I look forward to any questions and additional input from the board and residents. Thank you.
So out of the 14 people who responded, how many would qualify? Again, I forgot.
So 10 out of the 16 met the minimum lot size requirement of 10,000 square feet. So they would be eligible for some sort of ADU, and that represents over 60%.
And does the legislation have, originally we were talking about limiting the numbers, you know, per year?
So the legislation indeed authorizes the town board to do just what you described, to put an annual cap on applications, and it allows the town board to do so by resolution. That can be done on an annual basis. So the local law doesn't specify the number of what that cap would be, but that would be something I would talk to the town board about. And whatever number the town board felt comfortable with, that's what would be memorialized in the resolution approving a local law for an ADU.
Do you want to explain why we put that in place? That, the fact that we could put a cap on the number?
It's permissible, it's a legal action. And one of the reasons is, in the off-chance that there is much interest, almost, let's just say, too much interest, I guess it's just a protective measure. The reality is, is in looking at other communities, in particular the villages of the town of Greenberg, the volume of applications that are applied for is rather low, perhaps one, two, or three applications per year. And I don't see why we would expect anything much different here in Greenberg. But nonetheless, it may give the board and residents comfort level to know that there's an annual cap of some modest number, perhaps 10, just to get an understanding that this is not intended to, you know, add 30, 40, 50 accessory dwelling units per year across the town.
Yes, and that would lay concerns by many of changing the neighborhood aspect, or, or contributing to an excessive amount of parking on the streets. So that is part and parcel of the reason that we decided to institute this.
And we also talked a few days ago about having like an annual review. You know, basically, you would get, do a report with possible, with recommendations, or, you know, comments what works and what doesn't work. And this way, we could, it could be a work in progress, the ADU legislation, rather than something that people would say, you know, this is, the law that we pass is the final version, and nothing else is going to change.
Yes, I agree with that. It would absolutely be able to provide that for the town board.
Yep. Ready?
Can we have, please, Dr. Carol Allen?
I just want to. Carol Allen from Beechwood Road in Hartsdale. Before I start, could I ask Mr. Duquesne a question? What percent of the residential, residential properties in Greenberg are over 10,000 square feet?
So the statistics, I do recall your comments from last public hearing, and I appreciate them. 75% of the town of Greenberg, the geography of the town of Greenberg unincorporated, is still one-family residential. Of that, the R5 district comprises approximately a little over 1% of the overall town land area. And the R75 district comprises a little over 10%. So collectively, those two zoning districts, and those numbers correspond to square feet. So R5 equals, is consistent with 5,000 square feet, R75 consistent with 7,500 square feet. So roughly 10% of the land area in the town of Greenberg contains those zoning districts. Now, that doesn't mean that every lot in those zoning districts are that exact size, but.
Mr. Duquesne, please. What, Mr. Duquesne, I ask the question, what percent are 10,000 and higher? That's specifically what I want to know, please.
So the reverse of the 11% would be, 64% of the town of Greenberg is zoned R10 and higher.
64%?
Yes, and I'm sorry, I don't have the number of lots. That's just percent of geographical land area.
Okay. Well, my point is, thank you very much for looking at my property. I have a 7,500. I have a beautiful, large backyard that would easily accommodate an extra unit, an ADU. But my property is not large enough to qualify. So I have a feeling that there, the majority of people in town would not qualify. We don't have the exact specifics, but it sounds like most of us would not. That means most of the middle class in our town would not qualify for this. I am concerned, because we're talking about seniors being able to age in place, but most of us would not be able to qualify. So our children would not be able to move onto our lots so that we would be able to stay in town with their assistance. We would not be able to age in place. We've given lots of approvals to assisted living, but I personally don't want to go in there, because I don't want to be surrounded all the time by mostly elderly people. In order to stay young, we need to have youth around us. We need to have our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren. And most of us can't afford to go into assisted living. Last I heard, there was like a minimum of $5,000 a month, and most people can't afford to do that. So I ask the question, who is this current law really designed to help? Because it does not seem to be written to help those of us who need it. Thank you.
Former town clerk Judith Beville.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Apparently, our current town clerk cannot read accurately. I did not sign my name as former town clerk. I signed my name as Honorable Judith Beville. My question is, are there any regulations or requirements in this law that hold the town accountable for affordable housing requirements? Is it in the law, in the proposed law, that the ADUs would rent at a rate that represents affordable housing?
No.
No? Thank you, town attorney. Okay, so if the ADUs are not going to respond to the need for affordable housing in the town of Greenberg, what strategies or proposed strategies, or proposed legislation on the part of this town board will address the need for affordable housing?
That isn't what this public hearing is about.
Excuse me. I understand that very clearly, Councilwoman Joy Haber. However, it is a question that is related to what the ADUs will represent, and what, and what they will not represent. So if they do not represent any response to the need for affordable housing, do you have the courage, the knowledge, and the ability to answer the question?
I think there need to be some clarity on the ADU. So the town board would not set the rate or the rental rate for an ADU. That is a contract between the homeowner and the tenant. So we wouldn't get in, we wouldn't get involved in setting the rates for that. That is out of our jurisdiction.
That's understandable, that you not get involved with setting the rate. However, you can establish and set a standard in your legislation. You are able to do that.
I had a thought, just off the top of my head. We could ask for state legis, you know, the, one of the values of the ADU legislation is that it enables people who can't afford to continue to stay in a community to, you know, to basically get some more revenue so they could stay. So it makes staying here more affordable. But also, in terms of the people living here, maybe we could ask for state legislation that would authorize, say, help in terms of construction costs, you know, in terms of assessments, you know, or, or whatever. I see somebody in the back going like this. But I'm saying, maybe there's some legislative incentives that we could be pushing for that will provide incentives for people to make the, the units, you know, more affordable. You know, the thing is, it costs a lot of money to convert your house into an ADU. And the thing is, maybe the state could provide financial incentives for those who would commit to keeping a unit affordable for, say, 10 years, or for a finite time. That would be a way of addressing what you're, what you're suggesting.
I believe the nature of it, of an ADU is that it is a small structure on private property, either it could be freestanding, but there are limits to the size, or more likely, attached to a, the, the main house, or part of a renovation of that main house. So there are limitations on, you know, if I have a lot of money to spend, then I'm going to want to spend, buy a freestanding house or condominium, rather than rent something that would be less than a private home. So I think it is somewhat self-limiting by the nature of what an ADU is.
But we could basically ask the state to provide financial incentives for people, for people who, during the construction, you know, process.
But the state does have that.
If there's a commitment.
The state has, the state has a program, we're on the website, the state has program and resources for that. I guess, so I guess the concern I have here is that, and, and town attorney, please weigh in on this, when it comes to ADU, we as a town board can't get involved in that transaction. That is not our, that is not our role. That is between the homeowner and whoever they're renting to. So for us to come in and mandate or say, you have to charge this, this is for them to make them whole. So how can we, how can we tell them?
I believe we could work on other legislation that deals with affordable housing, if the board wishes. However, the current law, that was not drafted with that intent, it has not been part of the proceeding. So I think, it sounds like the board is open to looking into that for a future legislation, but that, at this point, likely won't be added to this.
Thank you, attorney, town attorney Danko. I have been involved with this issue for several years as a former town clerk, and I know that the town board can entertain and consider such legislation. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no other speakers for the, oh, you had for another, you had for the other.
He said, you want to add his name?
You want to add his name, no problem. House Samas.
The only interest I have in this is, if accessible dwelling units are for a purpose, I don't understand, if someone is qualified, meets all the requirements to do that, why you are limiting them to 10 per year. This makes it sound like a lottery. If you're going ahead with this, anyone who wants to do it, it is private property you're dealing with, should be able to participate.
Any more speakers for the ADU hearing? And I just want to make a clarification, that when the former town clerk was speaking, she was not interrupted. So that's, when you ask a question, then your time is yielded to the speakers of the town board.
Can I ask Garrett a question?
Boris, I'm here, I'm here for you.
Yeah, if we wanted to... I'm wondering if it would make sense to, like, invite, say, somebody from the state who deals with ADUs, just to, you know, maybe meet with the board at a work session, just to discuss some of the state programs that are available, you know, to encourage communities to do ADUs and maybe to talk about affordability. Because I know that the governor has been pushing ADUs and is, you know, very supportive of this. It would be interesting to see exactly what's worked successfully in other communities, what's available to municipalities like Greenberg in terms of, and to residents, you know, if we get the legislation, you know, approved. There's all these programs that are available that could help make this, you know, more successful. And I think it would be really worthwhile if we had just a presentation from the state and they could tell us exactly what's available and what's not available.
I'm going to add one more point. We have had all of these conversations regarding affordability. Now affordability depends on what your audience is. So if your audience is, as Dr. Allen said, for the homeowner and to help with the affordability of living in place, that's one way of looking at this legislation. If you're looking at it from affordable housing and adding to the inventory, this is a drop in the bucket. This is not going to help with affordable housing, okay? This is going to help residents who want to remain in place and can be more affordable, living with their families. That's what this is going to impact. So I don't think there's any state legislation that's going to help us do anything different. We're targeting a certain need. We can't target all the needs with this. So I just...
No, but I'm just saying, I know that the state is really pushing the ADUs and the governor likes the idea. And it would just be interesting to see, you know, what's available. And then if we decide to approve something, then we could maybe come up with something even, you know, better that could help, you know, more people, you know. It's not going to hurt us by having, by hearing from the state and seeing what's worked in other communities. This, you know, again, everything's a drop in the bucket. But if you keep having drops in the bucket, it eventually makes a dent.
Garrett, what was the group that came last year and spoke? Were they from the state? There was a...
From a nonprofit. But one example as a state incentive is, there's a program where the state, if the municipality that enables and allows accessory dwelling units partners with, I believe, a nonprofit, there's a mechanism to provide a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for eligible residents that seek to build an ADU. There's nothing that you need to codify to belong to that program. So the town wouldn't have to change this local law. It would be up to the town to see if it made sense to partner with an entity that would help facilitate this flow of funds to potential residents in the town. So, you know, that's one example. I'm not aware of anything else that the state has in terms of incentives. Anything else would be localized, such as waiving building permit fees or any other fees or something like that. As far as restrictions on rent, Joseph Danko is absolutely correct. The local law does not have anything like that. The only mechanism that could be done there is, as he indicated, is if something was done into the affordable housing section of the town. So I will say that the AVL, Accessible Viable Living Committee, did think about the prospect of recommending something in terms of affordability. And in light of that combined with, I think, Councilwoman Hendricks' point that by the sheer size of accessory dwelling units, which range from four hundred to eight hundred square feet, they're inherently sort of de facto less expensive. They're not going to fetch the same rents that, you know, a twelve-hundred or fourteen-hundred square foot apartment would have. So the AVL actually did not recommend to do anything with affordability for those reasons. And I will say that they discussed that at length.
And, you know, the state propositions or the state, the idea that the governor had for ADUs got voted down. It didn't pass muster. And there were a number of different reasons for that. But, you know, there is a group from the Wamoa group that studied them extensively. So I believe it was Chance Mullen and Nikki Armakost, who perhaps can enlighten. But they did speak to the AVL committee. So I think that we've looked at that carefully. I know the county looked at it carefully. So there's been a lot of research into it that I'm sure we can avail ourselves of. Thank you.
So do we want to close the hearing?
I like to hold it over.
Okay, so when are we holding it over till?
We'll keep it open.
Keep it open.
February twenty-eighth meeting. Adjourn to February twenty.
Okay.
Could we have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the hearing until February the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, twenty-sixth, sorry.
Twenty-sixth, yeah.
Okay, February twenty-sixth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to be having a public hearings. The first hearing is to consider a local law which would establish accessory dwelling units as special permit use with related updates to Section two eighty-five dash five, two eighty-five dash ten, two eighty-five thirty-six, two eighty-five thirty-eight, two eighty-five thirty-nine of the code of the town of Greenberg, TV twenty-three oh nine. And Joe, would you like to... Oh, actually Garrett's here. So Garrett, do you want to speak a little bit about this continued hearing?
Yes, thank you. Good evening Supervisor Finer and Town Council members. For the record, Garrett DuKane, Commissioner of the Department of Community Development and Conservation. This public hearing is a continuation of the hearing held on September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, December eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, February twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. And it's related to a zoning text amendment, which seeks to regulate and permit accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, in the one-family residence districts of the town by special permit approval of the planning board. The local law that supports the hearing tonight is unchanged from the version posted for the last hearing date. The council, Greenberg Civic Associations, and some residents have sent in comments since the last hearing, which I was able to respond to by email. And I look forward to answering any questions the town board may have. And also look forward to hearing additional input from residents. Thank you.
I just had a question. I forgot, I think, to open the hearing. Do we have to, you know, just continue hearing? So I'd like to move that we open the hearing and we can include Garrett DuKane's comments as part of the record. So I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. Anybody like to say?
Garrett, could you summarize what the Council Civic Association's issues were and what your answers were?
Sure. There was a variety of questions from the Council of Civic Associations. Some of the questions the Council of Civic Associations asked pertain to considerations about land values. And I responded consistent with my testimony to date that there's many protections in the law that factor in, whether it's parking or aesthetic considerations, landscaping, consistency with neighborhood character, that I feel are good protections. Therefore, my recommendations is that the local law is such that there should not be a concern that there would be any home value reductions based on the approval of this local law. They had asked some questions about consultation with real estate community. And there were some, like, lending questions. I did advise the council that that really is up to the actual potential resident that seeks to do an accessory dwelling unit. It's really upon them to find out if the loan mechanisms to be able to affect an accessory dwelling unit, unless so on the town to provide any of that information. There was, let's see here. There was questions about notifications to neighbors. I verified that that is part of the law. There was a question about if people move into a home, should they be made aware of an ADU? And I indicated that there was no mechanism in place to do that or a way to reasonably do that. So that was something that I did not feel was achievable. And in general, it was answering questions about what is in the local law and assurances that the protections were there. The Council Civic Associations did have one comment, which I've yet to take up with the town board. And that is just generally how to just best approach residents. This is my main takeaway from their comments, is I don't really get the word out in the maximum way. And I understand, you know, that it's not practical to send a letter to every resident in the town. That would be rather expensive, and I just don't think that's practical. But I did acknowledge that we do our best. And I have a list of civic association leaders' emails that I tried to do my best to alert them of these meetings like this. And, you know, it's my hope and appreciation that they send that out to their constituent civic association residents. And I identified that the town supervisor is very good with the e-blast, with the understanding that not every resident is on that. But, you know, that is a constant challenge. There's really unfortunately not a way to, you know, let every last resident, you know, with certainty know that this local law is in effect as a proposal. So, you know, we're always thinking of ways we can broaden outreach to residents. But that's a consistent challenge.
Yeah, so I was at the Council Civic Associations, and their main concern is, most people don't have a clue what the changes in the code are, because we keep saying, you know, we're having a public hearing on an ADU. But there's really three different types of ADUs. There's ones inside a house. There's ones that could be in an existing structure. And there's one building a new structure in the backyard. And that's my main concern is, you know, it's a fundamental change in our zoning. You know, up to now, we've always said, one kitchen, one family, two kitchens, two family. I don't, I think we did that when homosexuals couldn't get married and it was discriminatory, saying only married people, you know, is a family. And I don't think we have to rely on that anymore. So I'm wondering if there's another way of addressing this. But how do we... And I'd rather do it in advance, rather than say, this is what we did, and do the surprise. I think we're committed to doing a mailing anyway on ESCOs and getting something out. Maybe we could do this at the same envelope. I don't know. But I'm very concerned that, you know, it's a fairly dramatic change. And I know the answer's going to be, well, you don't get many units. But if you don't get any units, you're really not solving a problem. So there was a lot of frustration at that Council Civic Association's meeting, mainly over people don't know about it. Even them trying to explain it to the members of their individual civic associations, it's not getting across, because we're basically taking three different things. You know, some people may not have a problem with having something in an existing home. You're not changing the shape or the size of the home. Versus a garage versus a, there's a building, a new building going to go in your neighbor's backyard that may be blocking the sunlight from your yard. It's all taken as the umbrella of ADUs. And it's, you know, it's not a schmorgasbord, it's all or nothing, apparently. So, but anyway, we're here for a public hearing. There's very few people here.
I just have a good question.
Sure.
Would you also be interested in having, say, three separate, you know, local law proposals? And separate, you know, no, I'm just throwing, you know, because, you know, the board may decide to adopt all three. But this way, you know, you may feel, or the Council Civic Association, some of the board members may feel more comfortable saying, okay, I could live with just, you know, the ADUs just for a single family, existing homes. Other board members may want to do something a little bit, you know, stronger. This way, all the board members would have an opportunity to vote for, you know, any aspect of the laws that they feel comfortable with.
Well, can I just interject that it's not really three different scenarios? It's really two different scenarios. Having an ADU within an existing home or on top of a garage, you're not changing what you're talking about. You're not going to have another structure that could impact sunlight, views, whatever it is. So maybe it's two separate things.
Right, right.
Well, except it may not be on top of a garage. It may be the garage, what they're using for cars. And now you're putting them onto the street perhaps. And now we have to deal with more neighbors saying, hey, where am I supposed to put the car?
Well, yes, but I think that since they're being judged on a case-by-case basis and knowing that what the street is like, what parking is like on that street when they go for approval, and that's all going to be taken, I think Commissioner DuKane has said, that will all be taken into consideration if they're, you know, in order for them to get approval. That would be, regardless of whether there's a garage with cars that come out or whether there's already a lot of cars on the street, whatever it is, it's going to be all assessed case by case.
But as I read this, if you don't have any off-street parking, the planning board doesn't have to turn it down. They have the discretion to turn it down if there's no off-street parking. I'm not exactly sure why there should be any discretion if there's no place to park. How do you put in the ADU?
Forrest Park, if I could chime in, Officer. There's a baseline requirement of two off-street parking spaces for every single-family home. There would be an additional requirement off-street over and above that based on whether the ADU is a studio or a two-bedroom. And the way the local law is comprised is, for a studio accessory dwelling unit, there would be one additional off-street parking car requirement, for three total. And if it's a two-bedroom accessory dwelling unit, that there would be a total of four off-street parking spaces required, or two additional. So that contemplates whether or not you're retaining a parking space within a garage or not. But you would have, one would have to show that they have the correct number of off-street parking spaces on a plan to be approved. And I would say clearly that the planning board does not have discretion to stray from that. That's a very cut-and-dry criteria.
Okay.
Are we ready now for speakers?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. May we have Sherry Yui?
As a reminder, each speaker gets five minutes per round. And there's a clock on each side of the room. And the clock will start once you begin. But please state your name and spell it as well. Thank you.
Hello, Sherry Yuji.
Is the mic on?
Is the mic on?
Should be green.
Sherry Yuji, E-U-G-U-I. So I am new to this issue. I came to the last meeting. I just wanted to get up and express my support for accessory dwelling units. I'm new to the issue. I, my mother-in-law lived with us for seventeen years. And she recently moved to a nursing home. So she had a close-in setup. I mean, there really, in my situation, there would be really minimal requirements. And being able to do this would help us close the gap of some of the expenses that we have to cover. But I also wanted to express another benefit that the group may not have considered. And that I also have two college-age children. And by allowing accessory units, you are giving a greater path for kids who've grown up in this community to have, you know, a line of sight to be able to afford to live here. You know, I think about my daughter graduating. Wouldn't she be more likely if she didn't have to live totally in the same space as us? It's another benefit that I didn't hear mentioned. I also was perusing the internet and realized that this discussion for the town has been batted around for quite some time now. So I'm sitting here like, is this going to go on like another two years debating it before something is going to get done? So a little bit of frustration on that. I know you want to get it right, but having something, even if it's not perfect, can be a benefit. I also reviewed and, at this conversation, the state and county level has been going on for a... on for a long, long time. I saw that there's model codes from the county, model codes from the state, and they all, you know, they're very long, I didn't read every word, but they all had the same thing, theme going on. It's minimize restrictions. And, you know, minimize restrictions and complexity. And I would also say that what the group just mentioned about, you know, segregating it, like, I get it, someone's not going to want a big structure put up in their neighbor's yard. But I heard people talk at the last, at the last meeting, that we're just missing the ability to do this, in some, you know, less than 10,000 square feet. And I thought about that, and I looked at the town map, and some of these communities that are the R 7.5 or below, and I thought about the ones that I knew. And I said to myself, you know, gee, if they were the ones that were contained, and you weren't adding on, and you still met the same setbacks, you know, in these neighborhoods, if one, you know, if you put a few in there, would it really change the character of the neighborhood? It wouldn't. It would be fine. You know, you put a structure in the backyard, it would be different. So I think that that is a good start, to think about the two or the three different ones. But I would just implore the group, like, get it done and put it to bed, and let's just not talk about it for another few years, because there's going to be people like me that this is not an issue now, and then it can be a viable solution when changes happen to your family, for good or bad, to make things work. So, thank you.
Next, we have Hugh Schwartz.
Good evening, Town Board. First of all, I want to thank this Town Board for being so deliberate on this. This is a big issue. It is. It's, I was totally against ADUs when we started this in the ABL, and it took a while and a lot of education to get to where we are. Just for the record, our law, the one that is being proposed here, is the only law in the area that does require parking. That was a major thing, and Ms. Hendricks was with us, I think, on the ABL, we had a long talk about parking. The other thing I wanted to say is, the ABL law that was proposed never got to this Town Board, unfortunately. There is a difference in what the ABL proposed and what the Town Board is considering now. And there's only two differences there. One has to do with the restriction of 20,000 square feet for an additional structure. The other is a total ban under 10,000 square feet. And I want to address that tonight. Garrett did a terrific analysis of, just today, I got a copy of it, which gave the impact of the 10,000-square-foot limitation. It turns out that 38% of our properties are between 5,000, residential properties are between 5,000 and 10,000 square feet. So you are, in fact, packing by having that restriction, a significant amount of people. Plus, I also want to thank both Ellen and Joy from the last meeting, because you said something, and it takes people a long time to realize what you guys realized. And I really appreciate that, which is, ADUs aren't about just creating a new, less expensive and affordable unit. They're also, as this young lady just said, to help out people who live there, to let them stay in place, let their family grow there. And a lot of those people live on pieces of property that are under 10,000 square feet. And you're not, if you leave the law the way you have it now, they wouldn't be allowed to do that. So that was a change I really, really wish you'd make to this law. I really do. I know this seems hard. The good news is, you're also going to limit the number of the first year, we're going to see what the impact is. In terms of the 20,000-square-foot limit, I understand that one. And while it wasn't a recommendation from the ABL, or on the Planning Board, when I was Chair of the Planning Board, I do support it. I think that makes sense, because of what the potential impact would be. So if you could keep that change, and just make the change to the 5,000-square-feet, and I know that Mr. Sheehan is a concern, and I understand it too, about, well, what happens if they're going to pave their front lawn? I've heard that quote. And I understand that too, except for the fact, the underlying zoning still applies, so you have impermeable surface limitations that won't allow them to do that. That's why you have a zoning law. That's why this is going to be a special permit. And the only one who can overturn what's in this law as a special permit is actually, the Planning Board doesn't have the discretion to overturn the law. The only one who does is the zoning board. And Francis and I have worked very creatively on a couple of laws in our time, to try to even keep that to a limitation. So please, I know this has been a tough thing. This is the most comprehensive law in the entire state of New York. Just make the one change to 5,000 square foot, and let our zoning laws and our Planning Board do their part of the job. Thanks very much for listening. Have a good night. Welcome back, Francis.
Nice to be back.
Anybody else?
Yes, we can have Hal Samos.
Nice to be back.
However you define this, this is not a good neighborhood policy. My own interest in this is peripheral. I haven't studied it. I can't quote the law as it appears, or even what's suggested is language, but I am responding to certain gut feelings about what has been presented. This originally came to my attention, because I believe it was posed as an ability to create affordable housing. There is nothing in this law that guarantees or ensures that from ever happening. Taking that out of it, you have a completely different picture of what we are talking about. And I'm going to be contradictory, even to what I'm saying myself today from point to point. What I'm proposing is, less is more. Instead of dealing at the first crack, at all the possibilities before you, why not limit it to serving one class of homeowners? Either that be seniors, who need a way to stay in their place, or those people who have family members, like she has suggested, coming up, who also would need a place to live. And you could do that quite simply by establishing criteria that have to be met. You have none of those things there to define what needs are going to be resolved, and who is going to benefit. Now, if this is for seniors, easy enough to regulate, if it's for low-income people who need extra help to stay in place, income statements, asset statements like are submitted elsewhere, are certainly something that you can use to achieve that. I will comment on what I heard last meeting, and that is, if all of this is so well, good, and fabulous, why are we limiting it to 10 applications per year? They won't all be acted upon within a year's time, so why are we leaving people who would be benefit from this, out in the cold, waiting for their year to come up? And I have an odd situation to propose. What if you have an affordable unit on a large property, that has a swimming pool, and maybe a home gym on its premises? Are the tenants eligible to do this? And how should the rent affect it?
Next, we have Walter Simon.
My name is Walter Simon, former Chair of the Planning Board. One of the things we have, this law is not meant to be a magic bullet to solve every housing problem. We have a definite shortage of housing throughout this nation, and we need a multitude of strategies to solve it. One strategy will not solve the problem. So to say that this proposal has to solve the problem for the elderly, for the veterans, for people of lower income, for people of higher income, it will not do it. It is a tool that must be part of a large toolbox, to address the issue of shortage of housing throughout this nation. One of the things we should realize, that saying, the enemy of good is the perfect. We sit around and try to make a perfect law, and we do nothing in terms of doing something good, to make an attempt to address the housing problem that exists not only in this community, but throughout the country. One of the things that this law, if you look at the law that's being proposed, is more restrictive than any other municipality around. More restrictive, because it keeps the underlying zoning in place. The buildings have to abide by the steep slope law, impervious surface law, setback law, wetlands law. All the codes that apply to that particular zone applies to this. So you're not changing any of the zoning laws, and building these properties, other than saying you're allowed to do it. But all of the other laws stays in place. If there's an issue with parking, then let's address the parking issue. There's some properties that have adequate parking, because they have long driveways, they might have an existing garage. And I know one of the comments were, well, what if people go out and decide to pave their driveway, or pave the front of their home? Well, that's restricted by the impervious surface. They can go beyond that. And if you even want to go a step further, and say that if that amount of parking had to exist as of last December 31st, so people won't go out and start paving their front yard. But that really isn't necessary, because you have impervious surface laws that prevent that from happening anyhow. In addition, we know from experience, that from other towns, you only going to get maybe eight applications, plus, the Commissioner has already indicated that he'll keep detailed records of the applications, the when they apply, what zone they're in, whether or not they meet the requirements, keep detailed records. Plus, in this proposal, we're saying that the Town Board, after a year, will look at the data, and see if the law has to be tweaked. So I don't understand, where is the risk to the town? What is the risk? At some point, you have to take, make decisions to go forward. You know, one of the things that far too often, people see, they want to achieve something, the first thing they say, oh, look at all the barriers, we can't do it. And so, rather than saying, what is a strategy I could put together to overcome the barriers and achieve my goal? That's what the Town Board needs to do now.
Thank you. And you made a point, Mr. Simon, that I wanted to make, that we do have, you can sit down, I'm not asking you to speak, but I just wanted to commend the point that you made, which was that there is a review after each year, which the Supervisor had suggested, and I think it's a good one. And so, for people who are on either side of the issue, if there are, if you could call it that, or multiple sides, that look back will be instructive, and I think that's really important for us to note. And just further, in analysis of ADU laws throughout the county, and there were quite a few, besides this being the most restrictive, there is not a run on ADUs. I know that the Commissioner did reach out to see how many people might be interested, and there was a good response, but wishful thinking, or plans, I think there's a commercial on TV about a guy who keeps planning the changes in his bathroom, or his kitchen, or something, and it never seems to happen. Well, that often is the case. So I think that having this review will help us make some decisions. And another thing I'd like to agree with, letting the perfect be the enemy of the good, is something that we also have to take into consideration. Thank you.
Yeah, there's just only one other point, you know, I was just thinking about it.
Excuse me, do we know that all the speakers have gone yet?
Well, actually, I have a question. I wasn't sure if I would be able to speak as a resident from the dais, or did I have to go to the podium?
You could speak.
Do I do my five minutes, though?
No, 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 I want to be fair, you know, because I do have, it's... I believe you should go to the podium, actually, as a resident.
You think so?
Yes.
Well, I'm going to speak.
What?
Because I actually live in a single-family home, but I'm not going to go to the podium.
Well, are you speaking as a board member?
I'm speaking as a board member who is also a resident.
Okay, that's different, because, you know, our clerk doesn't have the opportunity to speak as a board member, so...
She's still also elected, so, you know, I think...
All right, whatever, that's fine. I'll do it. Okay. As a homeowner, I looked online, and I saw that Zillow says that I have a little over 10,000, and then the other one says I have a little under 10,000. And the reason why this is a concern, because Darius is like, mommy, can we build a garage so I can live on top? So this is more for not affordable housing, but as far as, you know, children, you know, growing up, and, you know, where is he going to go to school, and what do I do at that point? So my question is, how there, of course, the 10,000, that is, that's an issue, at least for my property, it would be. And the reason why it's even more trickier is because part of my property is also part of a paper street, so it even goes further deep in the woods, to try to figure out how this would. And the reason, again, why it's a concern, is because we knocked down our garage, so I don't currently have a garage, but one belongs there, it's supposed to be there. So is it, do I rebuild it as a garage, or can I do it under the guise of an ADU? So I have...
Not allowed.
Not allowed. Got you. So, thank you. But that's...
If you're going to have more than 12 feet, you have to have it being an existing structure. Right?
Oh, thank you. And again, that was one of the reasons why I wanted to, I had, you know, questions myself, and of course, I can call Garrett, but I didn't know if there were other residents who might have my similar problem. So again, just rather get it on record, that 10,000, it's an issue if you do not have the, you know, the 10,000.
You wouldn't qualify, you wouldn't qualify either way. Because if you're going to build a garage and expect to put something over it, that's not allowed, even if you had 10,000.
Would you speak into the microphone, and ask me?
What it's allowing for is existing structure. You're trying not to change the character of the neighborhood. So if you have an existing structure that has an area over the garage, that's existing, that's more than 12 feet, you can use that existing structure. You can't build a garage and put an ADU on top of it, because it has to be an existing, lawfully existing structure.
But if there had been a garage there, and the footprint is still there, and it has been torn down?
No, that doesn't count.
Oh, okay. Quit, Simon.
I just wanted to say one thing, you know, today, you know, when I'm chatting with residents throughout the town, you know, a lot of people are complaining about the coned rates, and, you know, the...
And, you know, the Con Ed rates have skyrocketed. So a lot of people who thought they could afford to continue to live in the community now find that they can't because, you know, if your Con Ed bills were $600 a month and now it's becoming $1,000 a month, there's going to be, a lot more people are going to be strapped because they just can't afford to stay here. So I think the ADU legislation will, you know, is important because it will enable more residents to continue to live in the community. And, you know, it could offset some of the expenses from, you know, much higher utility bills, you know, the Con Ed is asking for an 11% rate hike. You know, anybody who's, you know, watched the news, you know, you could see people are paying over $1,000 a month on Con Ed bills when it was much less just a year ago, and it's going to be much more next year. So I sort of think that it's, you know, I would hope that we could just take some action, you know, sooner rather than later. We could always tweak the law, you know, if we need to, but we should actually just, in my opinion, I'm hoping that we can close the hearing, then have a vote one way or the other. You know, hopefully, yeah, the next meeting or sometime in March. You know, like you said, you know, you just don't want this thing to go on and on.
But Mr. Supervisor, this actually doesn't affect your property, right?
No, it doesn't affect my property because.
So what we're talking about, many of the people who spoke tonight don't live in single-family homes. Many people who spoke do not live in single-family homes. You do, and you were talking about family.
You do.
I, you're not the majority. You're not, you're not.
Excuse me, please don't speak from the audience.
I said, many of the people who spoke do not live in single-family homes. That's what I said. I didn't say everyone who spoke did not live in a single-family home. I do live in a single-family home. I live with an extended family, over 1,000 people have been to my house in the last five months. I live, I lived with my wife, with my three grandchildren, my daughter and her husband. My son lives next door with his son, no longer his wife. We eat in my house. They have an area where my grandchildren and my daughter and her husband live. We don't have a second kitchen because that's not allowed. So we've had the pleasure of always eating in the dining room on the main floor. We do that all the time because that's where the cooking is, that's where the food is, that's where we eat. I am well aware how important it is to keep family. There's no special provisions here for keeping family together and having units for family in this law. I wish there was some provision. I mean, Mr. Samas made a point as to maybe we should carve out where the need is, but that's not in this law. It talks about affordability. We keep hearing about affordable housing. There's no restriction. Somebody can put up a second dwelling in their backyard. The neighbors on both sides will be notified, but they can't do a darn thing about it because it's just notification. They don't get any kind of a veto power or whatever. They can go to the planning board and say, hey, that's out of the character of the community, but the terms in this thing are whether or not there's appropriate screening. How do you quantify that? I've mentioned before about if there is a lack of available Wall Street parking, and we heard about how many parking spaces you have to have. The commissioner told us how many parking spaces you have to have, but the planning board can waive that. It's in Section 15, right? The lack of available Wall Street parking, substandard street width, you would think that might be a reason to deny it? They can waive that. The lack of appropriate visual screening, what is appropriate? Or other inadequate psych characteristics. All of these are not quantifiable terms. With a special permit, if you meet the special permit conditions, it's as if it's as a right. My main concern is what was expressed at the Council of Civic Association, is we have not adequately informed the public of what this is about. We have, there's no doubt about it. We are making a fundamental change to our zoning ordinance and what it means to be a single-family zone. And if you're bought into a single-family zone, that will likely surprise you if your neighbors on each side of you now are putting up structures in the backyard as a dwelling where normally everybody can see up and down backyards. Now all of a sudden, somebody puts up a structure, you can, you'll be notified, but there's not much you can do about it. So my concern is about notice. My concern is about taking out ambiguous terms in this code. My concern basically is getting a handle on the three different types, and I think there's, could be quite an agreement on one of them, perhaps two. And I think telling people after the fact, oh, this is what we passed, when we're going way out of our way to tell everybody about escrow and Con Ed rates, right? We're doing a lot of notice on that, but the notice on this, all it says is, we're going to have a public hearing on an ADU. Okay, I guess it sounds okay until you read the details. And I just think it needs, I think it needs work. Yes, it's been around for a long time, but this is a major, major change.
So are you suggesting we keep the hearing open?
I would suggest that.
It depends if we're closing or not. If we're closing tonight, there will be a second round. If we're not closing tonight, there's only the one round.
I think we should keep it open.
Yeah, let's keep it open.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
Can I just ask a question? Would we be able, you know, because I think one of the things that some people are frustrated about is that, you know, it's been going on for months. Would we be, if we're going to keep it open, would we be able to say that we're going to make a decision one way or the other and have like some sort of, give ourselves a deadline so we could say, we're going to definitely vote no later than the second meeting in April? You know what I'm saying? Or the first meeting in April? This way, we could all, you know, this way, everybody will see that we're just not dragging it on.
If we do proper notice? Matter of fact.
No, I'm just saying.
I left this out, you know? It seems like having absolutely nothing to do with ADUs. There's a provision in here in Section 9 where we're striking exemption from 28556 for a single two-family dwelling from the site plan regulations. That has nothing to do with ADUs, and yet, and I don't think it was noticed, that we're doing that. And that could have an impact on people.
Is the commissioner still on with us?
Commissioner?
Yes, I'm on.
Right. In nine, in Article, Section 9, amendments to 28556.
Yes, I have the share screen.
Yeah, you're sharing, you're deleting a single family, a single two-family dwelling from site plan exemption.
Yeah, I'll have to review that, single two-family dwelling. That's just a renumbering. Oh, wait, sorry. It is a single one-family dwelling.
Yeah, it's not a renumbering. On page eight, Article eight, or Section eight, number, you're striking one and not replacing it with anything. And that's our zoning map.
And the notice did not state that section. The notice relates to what is posted on our agenda, which mentions several other sections, but not 28536.
I'm sorry for stepping on you. Did you get that? Okay. I apologize. I think we have to go through this to find things like that that are unintended, no ill intent, that could have a dramatic change on other things other than ADUs and make sure we're limiting it to these specific topics. My main issue is how do we notice people and let them actually know what this is about?
Can I make another suggestion? This might, I don't know, it's not, I was going to say mailing, but what if, in the past times, the board had, I know when we had the COVID problems, we went outside supermarkets. What if we, as a town board, went outside, say Acme supermarket on a Saturday for a few hours, and we basically have a table and we provide people, you know, we have both sides and then we just chat with the residents?
Why don't we just do a mailing?
No, but I'm just saying, because my feeling is mailing, you know, people don't always respond, you know, to mailings unless they really.
I don't think we'll capture enough people with an Acme.
No, but I'm saying, I feel you could get a sense when you're talking to people, what, if you talk to 100 people, you'll get a sense pretty quickly what the reaction is.
Right, but I think what Francis is saying is more than just getting a sense, is that we, it's our due diligence to send a actual notification. So let's do that.
Might I suggest, rather than going back and forth tonight, is that we put this on a work session agenda as to how it best to deal with notice.
But could we then maybe, maybe could we say today, like, give ourselves like some sort of deadline that you think is reasonable?
Only if you'll do that for every item on the agenda. From going forward, as soon as there's a proposal, we give it that. We don't know what's going to come out.
Yeah, because, no, because I just sort of feel this has been going on for like six, you know, a long time.
Well, this is, these are good considerations that have been raised, and, you know, if it's gone on this long, for it to go on a little longer, I don't think we should limit ourselves to a couple of weeks.
But I'm sympathetic to your issue. As you can tell.
When this started, I had an afro.
I want to discuss it November of 2023.
Something totally different.
Do we have a motion to hold over?
No, I'm not holding it up. We're leaving the record open. I mean, we're leaving, we're adjourning for all purposes, right?
To the next meeting, March 12th, I believe that is.
Is that time for us to have this discussion?
Yeah, there's going to be a townwide mailing. I would suggest perhaps the second meeting in March.
Okay, let's do that.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Motion is that we're adjourning the hearing for all purposes to the.
March 26th.
March 26th, thank you. I don't mind being a puppet.
Are we ready to second?
Second. Thank you.
What year are we talking about?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Supervisor, what was your vote?
No, I said what year.
No, I know, but we have to have a record of our votes.
Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.